Take the time to welcome everyone to the Rockcastle County Board of Education. This is our regular monthly meeting. And just wanted to let everyone know beforehand, one of our board policies that we try to go by is if you want to speak at one of our meetings, that you have to notify Central Office. I think it's 24 hours prior to the meeting in order to be put on the agenda to speak. We don't do this to cause any type of headache for anyone. We want to hear your voice. It's just that if we didn't go by certain policies, there would be times that we would never get out of a meeting. And we have to, we have to follow those. So with that being said, I just wanted to make sure everyone knows. The other thing I wanted to say is I appreciate you. I appreciate you for being here. I appreciate your voice. I appreciate, there's not a doubt in my mind that everyone in here has got a concern for the children of Rockcastle County, or you wouldn't be here. So with that being said, the first thing on our agenda tonight is a moment of silent prayer. Amen. Let Item 1B be known that that's a roll call. All board members are present tonight. Item 1C is our Board Team Commitments. I'm going to read those tonight. This is a list of commitments that we as a board, we adopted many, many years ago, as long as I've been on the board, and I think I've been here for 20 plus years. But it's still very relevant today. So with that being said, to improve our effectiveness, the Board Team for Rockcastle County Schools commits to review processes and experiences to identify and direct improvements. Continuously define and work toward long-term goals which serve all students of the district. Make each decision based on facts and the best for all students. Listen to each other and speak freely. Work together, support each other, and not surprise one another. Discuss board deliberations to point a mutually agreeable resolution based on factual information. Support the majority's decision. Projecting board unity towards shared goals for continuously improving district-wide student learning. Operate without personal or political agendas. Respect one another. Agree to disagree respectfully. Delegate implementation to superintendent and the education team, and to respectfully remind each other of these commitments. The next thing on our agenda is we need to adopt the agenda. With that being said, we need to make a few changes to the agenda. The first thing that we need to do, if you have that list, we need to add a 5L under Operations and Actions, and that is going to be the Fiscal Year 2022 Facility Statement of Assurances. Ms. Jenny, I'm assuming that is just...
It is routine. It's 20% vocational funds to support facilities improvements at our ATC.
The other change we would like to do in this will probably make everyone in this room very happy, or it should make you very happy, I promise. We are going to switch out, under Item, under Discussion and Action, 6A and 6G. So instead of 6A being of proving our financial reports, we are going to move the review and approve the COVID-19 protocol at that time. So we are going to do that toward the beginning of discussion so that if any of you choose to leave, we, of course, would welcome you to stay for all of it. But if any of you are here mainly to just, to figure out what we're going to do, then you can leave after that if you want. But of course, you're welcome, you know? They get kind of boring sometimes. Especially when you start talking about a lack of money, or if you got money or not, you know? Nobody wants to not have money. Thanks to Ms. Jenny, we don't worry about that much, but... So with that being said, though, the highlight of our evening is we like to showcase our schools every month. And that's why we're all here. So Mr. McClure, tell us about your school.
Thanks for having us. I know the, the rest of the schools, they've presented their monthly meetings. And tonight, I just wanted to kind of share a little bit about what goes in at the Academy, because not everybody knows, because not everybody has a student at the Academy. And this year, we have two parts with the Academy. Two parts with the Academy. The first is the in-person, the old-school, in-person Academy, alternative school. When we enroll students at the Academy in-person, then they either meet with me, or they meet with Ms. Betty Holt. And we do a little, you know, in Rome, we ask some questions, find out what's going on, why were they sent to the Academy? So during this meeting, we sign behavior agreements with those students, because some of those students come to us because of behavior issues. We've got, you know, there's the normal forms that every school has, dress code form, attendance contract, you know, and get all their, if they come to us at the beginning of the school year, we have to fill out all those enrollment forms. If they get sent to us during the middle of the school, school year, they've already, you know, completed some of those forms. But we discuss expectations with each student, and we kind of outline how the daily routine goes at the Academy. When they get off the school bus, or if they get dropped off there at the Academy, we search those students, make sure that they don't have anything in their pockets. We take their cell phones from them, we lock those up in a cabinet and stuff, because we just feel like they, they don't need the cellphone during the school day at the Academy. They can, parents can call us. Ms. Betty Holt does a great job of answering, you know, texts, emails, call, phone calls and stuff, and communicating with those parents. And we let those parents know at that first meeting, you know, what to expect. They're not going to have access to their cellphone during the day. If you need something, you call us, you contact us, email, and we'll get back to you. And then just any other questions those families have, you know, at that meeting. Of course, like I said, students, yeah, you can go ahead, students transfer to the Academy for a variety of reasons. Now, we do have some parents that come in and say, well, my kid's not in trouble, why are they going to the Academy? But it's not just for students that are in trouble. As you know, the last couple of years, we've seen an increase in, you know, mental health issues. So we do have a, a few students that have social emotional needs. It's just, I mean, it's been a struggle for everyone. Some do come for behavior reasons that, you know, out of our hands, high school, middle school, you know, wherever they come from, they kind of take care of the behavior first, and then may send them to us at the Academy to, to work those, you know, those placements out. If we receive a student from a, a different district, if they move in from another district and they've been at an Academy setting, we like to place them at the Academy to begin with, just to find, just to fill those students out, find out, you know, what's going on with them, you know, have, have they corrected their issues? And then again, we set those behavior goals when they move in with us. And, you know, we kind of give them a six weeks, maybe, we may say nine weeks, we may say semester, but we kind of set a goal, we set a timeline and some goals with those students. And hopefully, you know, they reach those goals, and they can transfer back to the middle school, they can transfer to the high school, or whatever school that they need, they need to go to. And like I have up there, we may just have them for a few weeks. I mean, I think one student's going to leave us March 18th. Another student left us a couple of weeks ago when the semester changed. We sent a middle school student back, you know, in between the semester and, and today. So just, just anytime we can transfer those students, we just try to do what's best for each individual student, because nobody that we have is on, you know, the same track. Nobody comes to us at the same place, and nobody's, you know, going to end up at the same place. And, and that last bullet there, like I said, Ms. Betty Holt does a great job of communicating with parents. If they don't show up to school, we call, we text, we email to let them know that you're not just going to skip school. Because we do have some that are there for attendance purposes. They, they go to school truant, whatever it is. But we just stay in constant communication with those parents to let them know that we're going to check on you. You know, don't skip two or three days, because we're going to call. And eventually, they get tired of hearing those calls and emails and stuff, so they're like, you better get up and go to school. I'm tired of getting called every morning. So we, we do stay in constant communication. But of course, we have fewer students, it's easier for us to call them and stay in contact. Numbers at the in-person Academy, we have at one point had 56 students enrolled at the Academy this year. Of course, not all at the same time, but 56 students enrolled. Today, last one yesterday, one moved to the middle school yesterday. So we have 22 students today for in-person instruction. And that's grades 6 through 12.
Is that, do they attend all day?
They attend all day.
Full school day, okay.
Yeah, full school day. So they ride a bus, get off the bus, or parents drop them off in the morning, and then they get on the bus at, at 3:00. So, yeah, all day, that's 22 students. We have two classrooms. I have a classroom, and Ms. Betty Holt has a classroom. So we split those students up. May split on middle school, high school, we may split on male, female, we may split on who needs to be here, who does not need to be here. So we just, sometimes we let them draw. You know, if they behave for a few days, we let them draw for the split. But we split them up so that you don't have 22 students crammed in one room, because the room is a little bit smaller. And every hour, you'll see the schedule, every minute, every hour, they switch back and forth. But the platform that they work on there in-person is edgenuity platform, just like with the virtual school we'll talk about here in, in just a minute. Ms. Betty Holt is special education teacher there. So any student that comes to us with an IEP, their, their needs are met. I mean, she does a great job, the paperwork, she does a great job working with those students. Some students that we get, they're behind on credits. Some are not behind on credits, they didn't even start credits, so they have a long way to go. So with the edgenuity platform, they can work a little faster than they could in a regular school setting. So they might be able to make up, instead, like at the high school, instead of seven credits in a year, maybe they can get eight or 10, they can get caught up just a little bit. And we have, on the edgenuity platform, we have credit recovery courses to where they can test out of some of the content, because if they're in credit recovery, they already had a little bit of English 9, or a little bit of English 10, and they just failed the class. So we don't want them to redo everything. We allow them to take the credit recovery portion, and, and then they can test out some things. But Ms. Betty Holt also, she works on some soft skills with, with those students, because again, they have some issues, speaking, speaking in front of others, social anxiety, but she works on that, those things with them, you know, throughout the day, throughout the week. Also, some coping, see, how do we, how do we deal with anger? How do we deal with, you know, with others? If somebody says something that I don't, that I disagree with, how do I handle that, instead of just flying off? One boy we talked to yesterday, he said, I have, yeah, I have a smart mouth. He said, I, I like to smart on. You know, so we let him calm down a little bit, talk to him. Got him back in the room, she's like, all right, when you come back, you know, it's a clean slate. And that's what we feel like we have to do there. It has to be a clean slate, I mean, almost every hour with those students. Because at home, at home, it's probably not a clean slate. They, you know, they may hold grudges, those students, if they get in trouble at home, but we just try to, you know, forget, you know, a lot of stuff. And just, you, you go to the next minute. But he did, he, he admitted, and I guess that's part of it, is admitting that you have a smart mouth. He's going to work on it. But he did finally take his hood off and quit saying bruh, bro, and all that, so he's working on it. So here, like I said, here's our daily schedule. So at 8:00, we welcome over to the middle school for breakfast. Of course, those lunch ladies at the middle school are awesome. They treat, they treat those students great. They give us second chance breakfast when we're over there, so we take a bucket back with us. So we have that. First period, 8:25 to 9:21, sometimes we get back at 8:15, it's just according to what to have for breakfast. And then, like I said, then we split into my classroom or Ms. Betty's classroom every period, and we just switch back and forth every hour. Lunch and PE is at the middle school at 12 to 12:50. So 12 to 12:25, we eat lunch. At 12:25, the eighth graders will exit the gym. We wait till all the eighth graders exit the gym, and then we go down to the gym and throw football, shoot basketball. But everybody has to be doing something. So they have to walk, they have to jump rope, they have to shoot basketball. So nobody can sit on the stage, nobody can sit on the bleachers, nobody can sit on the floor. And, and they know that. Some try it some days, they try to sit down, but of course, we get on moving. It's PE. And then we get back for about 15 or 20 minutes in fifth period, and then jag. Michael Schaefer comes over from the high school, Jobs for America's graduates. He comes over and he does a little group session with those, with those students. Now, at that time, he will put them all together. You know, in the spring, when it warms up, he may take them outside and do some activities with them. And again, he's working on those job skills with them, just work. I think today, they were playing Family Feud. He split them up into teams, and they had to work as a team, you know, to achieve a goal. And then the group with Somerset Mental Health, Ben from Somerset Mental Health, he comes Monday through Thursday, and he does group session with those students. And some of our students already know Ben from working with him previously, but when he comes in, he works with them as a group. Now, if they need individual time, counseling or something, he'll pull them out, you know, at a different time and talk to them. And some, some of them will catch him before he goes into the classroom, you know, and talk about what's been going on, and, and you know, what struggles they've had. And also, just like with the virtual, we'll talk about in a minute, Angie Payne, Chelsea Haysey, those ladies, they, they come and they do those counseling sessions there at the Academy. I think we have a couple more counselors that come in to visit students, you know, talk to them. So that's kind of the in-person Academy. Like I said, not everybody there is because they got in trouble. Now, there are some behavior issues there, but when they come to us, there's 22 students there, some of them miss, so 17 or 18 there. And it's a lot easier to control them there, because they're not trying to show off in front of 800 classmates, or 500 classmates. So, I mean, 22, you know those 22 people, they're not going to laugh at you and stuff every day, so... And then I brought two students with me today that are enrolled into the My Rock Online Virtual Program, and they'll read something here in just a second. But this is the other part of the Academy that we want to talk about tonight. And, and I know virtual, not everybody knows exactly what goes on with the virtual program. It's a lot different. We hope it's a lot different than it was last year. Last year, we heard a lot of parents and students say, I didn't, nobody contacted me, I don't know what to do. It's just, then I got some emails, and I emailed teachers, and didn't hear anything, and that, you know, it's no fault of anyone, because, I mean, those teachers had 150 students that they're trying to keep up with. And now, you'll see the numbers here, that it's, it's limited a little bit for the teachers that we have, so they can, they can narrow it down and work. At the beginning of the year, in the summertime, when Mr. Repert opened the application, well, you had about 25 or 30 students that applied. And then COVID numbers started increasing. And at the beginning of the year, we enrolled 149 students into the virtual program. You can see elementary had 50, 25K through 2, and 25, 3 through 5. And we decided to break it up. We had two teachers at the time, a kindergarten through second grade teacher with those elementary students, and then a third through fifth grade teacher. We tried to get the numbers as even as possible, and it did work out, 25 to 25. Middle school, we had 40 students, and in high school, we had 59. And that's at the beginning of the, and we, we thought, at the beginning of the year, we would have more high school students, you know, just for different reasons. But we did have 50 elementary students. And today, 20, we, a couple elementary parents called today. So we have 26 elementary students. You'll see 10K through 2, and then 16, 3 through 5, and the middle school, 34, and high school's 56. And that high school number, we have high school, Rockcastle County High School, and Rockcastle Academy high school students on the virtual program. Because some of our students that are enrolled in the Academy, they are on the virtual program. They don't come to us five days in person.
Mr. McClure, before you go any further, will you explain to everyone, just, I mean, because it's kind of misleading, how the virtual program that your school's offering is not like NTI days, doing virtual learning that way?
Yeah, we'll get to that when we get to edgenuity and stuff. Hey, listen, if you have any questions, you stop, and we'll, I'll try to answer them, all right? Best we can. If not, these two can answer them, even though they don't want to speak. So there's a link up here to the application. Application asks student's name, parent's name, phone number, what school you attended. And this was back in the summer, what school you attend, what grade are you going to be in the next year? And then the main thing was, of course, the reason for applying for the virtual school. Why do you feel like you need virtual school? And of course, do you have reliable internet access? So we wouldn't let you do it if you didn't have that. So when we called these parents, we brought them in, and we met, we went over this contract with them. The contract is the next Google Doc there. So we went over this contract, they had to sign the contract, student and the guardian was there. They had to cut, they had to come in. We couldn't do it over the phone, couldn't do it by Google Meet. They had to come in, and we had to tell them, because they didn't understand that it was going to be totally different than before. Like last year, like you mentioned, on Google Classroom, I was at the high school last year, so I had six periods of US history on Google Classroom, but trying to keep up with all of that. And those students trying to keep up with seven different Google Classrooms. Well, with this, it is on the edgenuity program, and these girls are talking about that, and then kind of how they work with edgenuity. But it's on the edgenuity program, and you're on, those students are only on the edgenuity program. So if they have seven high school classes, they have those seven high school classes on the edgenuity platform. But when those students came in, we kind of, or when they applied, we reached out to each school to find out if these students should be accepted into the program. And we did not take everyone back during the summer. You were not, if you were not successful last year on the virtual platform, last year, they used Odyssey Ware for the virtual platform. This year, it's edgenuity, so it's a little bit different. These girls like it a lot better. But if you're not successful last year, there's no reason to take you this year. If you didn't show up on those Google Meets when you were supposed to, there was no reason to take you this year. You know, if you didn't turn in work last year on the Google plat, or on Google Classroom or on the virtual program, then why should we trust you this year to turn that in? So we talked, reached out to the schools that they attended last year, and marked some students off the list. And we called and let them know why you were not accepted into the program. We didn't just leave you guessing, waiting all summer to find out if you're accepted or not. So, so we scheduled meetings with those parents, and Mr. Owens, Mr. David Owens, Ms. Shawneitha Watson, and myself, we conducted over 150, about 35 to 45-minute meetings, some of them less than an hour, of course. You know, parents have questions, and they want to talk. So we did that during our PD time. We had about a couple of weeks there during PD. I mean, we were, they were meeting, Mr. Owens and Ms. Shawneitha were, I mean, they were ragged by the end of those two weeks. But we had to see every one of those families in person and talk to them. We couldn't just, you know, word them out. So we brought them in, we went over the contract, you can go ahead. So when they came in, went over the contract, and you can see we're on the right side, we let them know how attendance would work. High school students, just like if they go to Rockcastle County High School, they go to seven different classes. So they had to check in with us seven different times throughout the day. They could email us, they could text us, they could phone call. If they turn in an assignment, we get a notification that they're, they're on there. So seven times middle school, I think middle school has six periods, so they had to check in six times a day. In the elementary, we made them check in twice a day. Now, sometimes it's probably the parents sending us an email, but somebody is on there on the computer. They're, they're checking something. So if we know that they're checking something and emailing us, we can reach out to them, we can call them, we can email. And we know when a student sends an email, we know when a parent sends an email. You go back, sorry. But what we, what, what we are working on now is edgenuity, which is the virtual platform that the district bought. And that's where all your classes are. We also use PathBlazer. PathBlazer is the elementary part of edgenuity. So 6 through 12 is going to be edgenuity. So you have classes, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade classes, math, science, English, and you have some electors. High school, I mean, it's English 10, 11, 12, so you have all those classes on edgenuity. And then PathBlazer is K through 5. So that's what they use on that program. We also use iXL, iReady Diagnostic. So any kind of diagnostic that everybody else has to take in the district, those virtual students are taking that as well. But we can get, and this, Ms. Jessica, she can see all that information she needs to see on iXL and iReady, because we have those students, you'll see us schedule a minute, we have those students working daily, working weekly on those platforms. And then when they came in, we kind of outlined, how, how are you going to be successful on this virtual program? So anything you do, it has to be completed to 100%. So at the beginning of the year, Mr. Owens and Ms. Shawneitha, they kind of laid it out to those students that if you do 3 to 5% a week, then you're going to be at 100%. Now, if you do 0% this week, you've got to do 6 or 12% the following week. So don't get yourself a hold. All right, so we, and that was for everyone when we started at the beginning of the year. And then, like I said, I have two students, I'll let them kind of talk about their plan, because they're successful right now. One of them said, I wish I wouldn't have been very good. Jalen Pennington is a, Pennington is a junior, and then Santana Hacker is an eighth grader, and they just wrote something, typed something up that they want to read to you, and just kind of tell about how they attack the virtual platform and what works for them. And like I said, not everybody uses this plan of attack. That's why we're calling all the students. And like I said, not everybody uses this plan of attack, that's why we're calling all the time and emailing. But for these two right here, they're, that's why they're here, they're on top of it.
I'm gonna be a little nervous, so I'm sorry.
Right, thank you for being here.
Got a beautiful smile.
My name is Jalen Pennington, I'm a junior on My Rock Online. I started the program in the fall. I was not satisfied with being in the high school for mo, for multiple reasons. I talked to my family about doing My Rock Online program, and they did not like the idea of it. I threatened to drop out of high school, I even researched about Penn Foster. I finally went to the school about it, and they tell me how the program worked. Once I started the program, I checked in every morning and looked to see what I had to do. I could work at my own pace, and it's a flexible program, so I could work on it when I want. When I need help, I can always send an email, text, or even a Google Meet. On the program there, guided notes, so you can take notes while watching the lectures. I made a plan of how I wanted to do my classes, I work on three classes one day and four the next, and back and forth. I work on my classes every day, and I even work some on the weekends. I go in every Tuesday at eight o'clock, and I work on my classes and get caught up on what's going on with the high school. This program has helped me begin to work through some of the issues I've had with traditional in-person instruction.
Wonderful, thank you for sharing.
My name is Santana Hacker, and I'm an eighth grader at the academy this year. I've been virtual student for two years. Each morning, I begin my school day by checking my email and progress in each subject. I usually start with the subject that I have the least amount of progress in, to keep myself on track and not fall behind in any of my classes. I save the subjects I find more challenging until the end of my day, so I don't feel rushed because I have other assignments waiting. Most of the time, I'm able to complete the assignments in a short amount of time and move on to the subjects I find more difficult, so I can spend more time researching and trying to understand what the lessons you want me to learn. This year, my most difficult subject is algebra. I chose to take a high school freshman course this year to challenge myself. Having Mr. Hendrickson available to do Google Meets for algebra has been a tremendous help. Mr. Owens is my weekly in-person teacher. If I need assistance with a subject, I go to him for help. This year, I'm going to school in person once a week for an hour and a half. It allows me to ask questions about my assignments, see some of my friends, and sometimes we work on assignments together. Last year, all my questions that we asked through email, and sometimes it was, it was difficult not to have someone able to show me a person. I'm a visual learner, if someone shows me how to do something, I pick it up, I pick it up much easier than just reading a material. By being a virtual student, I'm able to move at my own pace. Being in a classroom, sometimes I find myself lost because some subjects take me a little longer to grasp, and other times I get bored because I feel the teacher doesn't move fast enough. Being virtual has allowed me to move at my own pace. I do not know if the virtual program will be available in future years, and I'm not sure if I would continue the virtual program or not. But I do believe that if it were available, I would consider it an option for my education.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing.
And you can tell it, both of them, they have a plan of how they're gonna attack it. One of them, three classes one day, four classes the next day, another one, she saves the ones that she does not like until the end of the day. But every student kind of has their own plan, and we kind of encourage them to create their own plan and how they're gonna attack this, how they're gonna complete one hundred percent. Out of those one hundred and fifty things we had at the beginning of the year, those students, of course, we did have some siblings. Santana has a kindergarten sister that is there. So we did our best to work out a time so when the parent would only have to come up there one time. We bring them in, you can go ahead, so we bring them in in groups of about four to six, and you can see Ms. Jane Albright here on the left, she's working with the student. Of course, that's K through two, so trying to teach them to read, trying to teach them numbers and stuff. But we tried to work out a plan where those siblings could come in at the same time. Now, some parents said, well, we'll come whenever, whenever eighth graders have to come, whenever third graders have to come, we'll bring them because they had more flexibility. Others, we tried to work out so that they come in at the same time, they're up there about, for about an hour and a half, two hours. Now, some students were a little farther along in the school year, they want to come in a couple times a week. And I think with the kindergarten, second grade, Ms. Jana, she started bringing them in twice a week because she is down to ten. And she has a little bit more time in her schedule to bring those students in twice a week, and they need that, they need that, those reading skills, those math skills early. Also, while they're there, they get any related service, that speech, uh, OT, counseling services, I mean, any kind of related service that they have, that they need while they're at school, they get that when they come to us at the academy. And on the right-hand side, you can see Ms. Alicia Cromer there, at her computer, that is a Google Meet session, and there's about five or six students on that Google Meet. And all the students that were supposed to be on time, so, uh, Ms. Alicia, Ms. Jana, they'll send out a weekly schedule. We're gonna be on Google Meet at one o'clock, third graders, they get on there, they're ready for that, because, it's like they said, they want to see their friends, they want to talk to, talk to people because they've been away from each other for so long. And if you don't show up, if you're not on that Google Meet, if you're not at that in-person session, we call, we email, we text, right, ladies, if you're not there. Mr. Owens is calling, Mr. Hendrickson's emailing, where you at, I thought you were coming here this morning, had coffee ready. Virtual connection to in-person, students who rode to My Rock Online, we, they still have the opportunity to attend games, dances. We, Mr. Owens, he would take those middle school students over and buy dance tickets. When they had a dance there, winter ball dance, whatever they had, he would walk them over to the middle school to help them buy tickets for those dances, because we want to try to keep them involved as much as possible. So when they transition back to in-person school, then it's not, you know, it's not a big shock to them. Um, then testing, ACT, uh, Ms. Angie Hendrickson's coming tomorrow to meet with us, talk about ACT, because those juniors have to take the ACT. Couple weeks ago, all, all of our seniors, twelve or thirteen, met with Mr. Bustle and Ms. Becky Smith there at the academy to, um, talk about caps and gowns, senior trip, all that planned for the end of the year for seniors. When we get information from the schools, we pass that along on our Google Classroom, we pass that along some way, shape, or form to those students. We, normally, we post on Google Classroom, we send an email, we do two or three different things. If it's something like seniors need to talk about, I come in for cap and gown, Ms. Ashley McKean works there, secretary, or the instructional assistant, she calls all those seniors and tells them, you have to be here at one o'clock. So we, for that, we really don't give them much of an option, we just say, everybody comes Wednesday at one o'clock. And you can get out of bed, you can, you know, whatever you're doing, come at one o'clock, because normally you'd be in school eight to three, and that's kind of what we want. We tell those students, you would normally be in school eight to three, so just get up at eight, while you're making breakfast, do some work, and knock some assignments out, and, and it would be easy to knock out thirty, forty-five minutes while you're making breakfast and eating breakfast. Um, again, just, today, they were doing some, about decorating some Valentine cards. Uh, we're just trying to do as much as possible that they would do in, if they were in the regular school setting. Um, just try to, you know, open those relationships, keep those relationships open with other students. That girl, the one on the right, she wouldn't share a cookie when she, she put it in her bag and done, she took it, she wouldn't let me have it. But that's, I think that was kindergarten today with Ms. Jana, but they, they like doing that stuff. Uh, you can go ahead, I think there's another picture, there's a Christmas event that we had, um, at the acad, Virtual Academy. You can see mailing letters to Santa Claus, I don't know who that guy in the middle is there. Are you in there, are you in the picture? But they're, again, decorating cookies, the Christmas tree, I mean, they absolutely love that. And, and for that Christmas event, we scheduled them to come in, I think it was kindergarten, first grade came together, second, third came, so we kind of grouped them by grade when they, they came up there. And you see some high school students snuck into pictures there, they were in there working and wondering why the elementary kids were getting to have all the fun. Face hating, again, there's Santa Claus staff, they had to get in the picture there too. Listen, and they were, some, some of those students were eyeballing, that's Mr. Hendrickson, of course, but they were eyeballing him, I mean, they were, they wanted to know if that was Santa. And somebody asked for a trampoline, and he was, if he would have known the parents, who the parents were, he would have told them, yeah, you're getting a trampoline. He said after the thing, he said, if I would have known that's who she was, he said, I would have promised her a trampoline.
He won't ask for ten thousand dollars.
I think something like that. Ten thousand dollars. Uh, special education enrollment, it's Ms. Shawnetha, she made some slides about this. Fifty students with IEPs throughout the year have been enrolled in My Rock Online that had, that had IEP. K through twelve, at the beginning of the year, I mean, there were, there were over thirty, you know, when the year started. Now, some of those students have returned to in-person instruction. You can go ahead, she, I think she shows some, again, we're talking about, you know, they get, um, they have goals at the meet, she works with them, Ms. Benny Hold will come down at times and work with some of those high school students that have IEPs, because there were so many for Ms. Shawnetha to, uh, work with at one time. Edgenuity, iXL, iReady. You can go ahead. Related services, again, we, we worked out a schedule to, we tried to talk to, you know, if it's Ms. Carla, whoever it was, Ms. Angela Mullins, whoever was gonna come over for speech or OT, we tried to work out a schedule with them of when they could get away from their school to come over and visit with those students. And they loved coming over there and, and, you know, working with those students, and those students, you know, they didn't need to miss out on that speech, didn't need to miss out on that occupational therapy.
So they come to your building?
They would come to our building, yeah, because we let them know, you know, when those students were coming, and then they would tell us, that doesn't work for us, so, alright, we'll give us a time, and then we'll call those parents, and we'll try to get those parents to come, you know, at that time. And then we work with them, Angie Payne and Chelsea Hacey to come and get all those services at the same hour and a half block. And, you know, if they get more services, then they may stay there for two hours, you know, just to get all those related services. Uh, because students, I mean, they need those counselors, they get counseling, they need it, you know, for that, just, all, all of us do. And here, uh, Ms. Shawnetha made like a weekly schedule for her students, she sent this out, she posted on Google Classroom to each of her students, and then she would give them a paper copy of that, that they would lose every week and have to get a new one when they came back in. But Monday, you can see Monday, work on math on iXL for an hour, language arts for an hour, and then on edgenuity, you do science and social studies. So, they couldn't mess this up, they had this in front of them, or they looked on Google Classroom, they knew what they were supposed to be working on, they knew what was expected every day. And now, edgenuity will, you get a grade on edgenuity, but with the iXL and the iReady, we kind of have to calculate that in and add it together with the edgenuity grade or the PathBlazer grade, uh, to give them a grade for their report card, for their nine weeks grade, or their semester grades, for their high school, middle school, or elementary. So, we kind of have to piece that grade together, but if they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, then the grade's gonna take care of itself. And then again, she's got, you know, don't forget that, her part of the slides presentation, a little prettier than mine. iXL is kind of what it looks like, if you had a student that was doing some iXL work, you can see, I mean, every level over there on the left. And that we give them links, we tell them where to go, we lay it out for them on, uh, Google Classroom. Go ahead. Um, on the right, it's an edgenuity guided notes. Now, those guided notes, we print those off for those students, or they can now, or they have access to them on edgenuity. But what that does is, like she talked about earlier, it goes along with the teacher videos, because on edgenuity, you're not just reading a bunch of work and answering a bunch of questions. You have teacher videos, some of them lasts five minutes, some of them, what, twenty minutes, three minutes, but they're real short videos, so they don't fall asleep and get bored listening to teachers. But those guided notes follows, you follow along with the, with the program. If it's instruction, this one up here, yes, it says instruction, so the instruction part of the video, you just fill in those boxes, you fill in those blanks. Now, they, like I said, they can download them on their, uh, Chromebooks, and they can type in those if they, if they want to. And then here's some other aids, some probes and stuff that Ms. Shawnetha would work with, use with her students when they come in. But just, she's just trying to use all different kinds of resources and stuff when those students come in, because nobody likes the same thing. And she's just trying to, you know, trying to tailor it to each individual student. Of course, you gotta do those, uh, checks, and you gotta do monitoring with those special needs students. Teacher observations, self-surveys, so, um, Mr. Hendrickson, Mr. Owens, uh, Ms. Jana that's there, Ms. Alicia Cromer, uh, the other teachers that we've had there at the academy this year, the Virtual Academy, they, you know, they'll do these questionnaires, they do these checks for those students, get them back to Ms. Shawnetha. And a lot of times, she would upload them on Google Drive, and she would share them with, if a teacher at the high school or middle school was their, uh, case manager, she would upload them in a drive, have that teacher's name on them, and she would just share them with those teachers, so that those teachers had access to everything that we were doing with those students. So that they didn't have to drive over and get them, they didn't have to call about them, those teachers knew where to find it, if, if one of their students on their caseload was with us at the Virtual Academy. Oh, of course, on the Chromebook, you know, we have a lot of different, um, services, a lot of different resources to those students. Now, they don't always know how to use them, but we try, that's one of the first few things that we do when they come to us, is we show them how to use all of these things. We show them how to, uh, select speed, we show how to, you know, magnify, we show, try to show them how to do everything. Next week, they forgot, we'll show them again, but eventually, they'll figure out how to use some of these, uh, some of this technology and stuff that they have on their Chromebooks. This is an example of a course on edgenuity, and what we can do for those students with an IEP, and this is just says Common Core Math, Semester A. But those green checks up there, if we click those green checks, that'll take an assignment away, so we can modify those assignments for those special needs students. We can take projects away, we can take away some, some writing, uh, a lot of re, long reading package, or passages for those special needs students. So we can take, we can modify those assignments. And then you can see the time up there, sixty-seven hours and twenty-seven minutes, but that's a semester class. If it's, it says A up there, that means that that is the first semester of Common Core Math. Now, so if students came at the beginning of the year, they got the whole class. They came semester, then they got part B, because hopefully, at Rockcastle County High School, if they're in Algebra I, they should be at X or place. And what Mr. Owens would do with the middle school, and we picked up a student this semester, he went over to that team that that student was on, and he just asked those math teachers, where are we? And, and then he would go up here and he would take off the lessons that they already covered, and he would just start where they needed to start. What, what, what did you not get to? And he just would go to those five teachers, take them about five minutes, a few clicks, and we start where they are, so that they don't have to double up on doing some things. And that's it, sorry, but if you need anything, you can email me, call, any questions?
I have a question.
Yep.
So, a, a full semester is eighteen weeks, so if the child gets, say, eight weeks into the semester, and they're not performing, they're not doing what they're supposed to do, will they be put back in the traditional platform, back in the classroom?
Yeah, they'll go back to the, they'll go back to the classroom, and they know that upfront, that's part of the contract. If you, if you don't check in seven times a day, you don't do the work, we're gonna call you, we're gonna email you. We went on a couple home visits this week, because students are not doing what they're supposed to, supposed to do. But in that contract, it says, if you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing, we're gonna come to your house, we're gonna come see you. And we've been on a ton of home visits for these virtual students. And most of the time, that jogs their memory, they're, oh, yeah, I'm supposed to be on there. One girl we visited earlier in the year, told Ms. Repert, she came in today as he was coming in. Uh, but yeah, we, and we let those schools know. Of course, the principals at the other schools, they all want to back everybody in person, I mean, that's the best way to learn, of course. But we try to use this the best way we can, we, I mean, trial and error, we've tried some different things, we've, I mean, while they've been on it, we've mixed it up a little bit. Like I said, with the elementary, we've tried to bring them in twice a week now, this semester, because, you know, they're missing out on so many skills.
Mr. McClure, I just wanted to comment to these young ladies, um, from what, from what you had said to us today, uh, your virtual experience that you've had, I think is, uh, you're probably more disciplined than most adults, and it will only, in, later on in life, will just, uh, be an encouragement to you, because, uh, I'm not so sure if I would be very successful in a virtual platform, and both of you are, and I, I commend you for that. So, and I commend your families for supporting them for that.
Yeah, that, and that, I mean, that's the only way to be successful on this platform is, you have to do it yourself. Again, you would tell those, told the students today, I know you're up at three o'clock in the morning watching TikToks, why not just let the TikTok go down, get on edgenuity? Because, Mr. Hendrick, I guarantee Mr. Hendrickson is opening, he's unlocking some stuff right now for students, right? Because he's not gonna quit at three o'clock. If you get locked out of an assignment, he, we have to unlock it for you, so all hours of the night. He said, you text me, he said, I might not get it until the morning, but you text me whenever you want to text me. He said, some kid texted me one o'clock in the morning last night, he'll get up at six and he'll unlock whatever it is, he's figured out how to do it on his phone, so. But those kids know, and they trust him that, you know, eventually, it's gonna get unlocked, you know, in the next, in the next little bit. But we just, we have to stay in constant communication with those students that are virtual, because it's like, so many told us last year, they didn't hear from, from us for some reason. Like I said, a hundred and fifty students is hard, but where they have it down to forty or fifty, they can do a little better job than, and everybody's on, they're all on the same platform, so it makes it a little easier to, to work with.
I, I want to make it just a quick comment, I noticed in one of your slides that you said the goal of the academy is to show each child how truly important they are. And I'll say every, every child has an individualized instruction plan there. And it's a great environment, it's a caring environment, it's a, we are here to support you environment. All of our schools are that, but it's such a small number of students there that they're really able to hone in and focus on the individual needs of each student, and able to provide those counseling services that are, that are needed. those counseling services that are needed for some students, able to get students caught up. And this is just something that, I think this is Mr. McClure's first year there, but he went in with great vision of what he wanted this to look like.
We're trying.
And, and he knew in his mind, you know, this, we're developing this, we're working on this, but he and Mr. Redford together and that staff there, they just put together, in my opinion, just an A-plus program, and, and I would, I would put it up against any virtual program in the state. I mean, it's, it's really has been done with integrity, and the, the part of inviting those families in and making sure those families are included, and requiring our students to come in and be in person, and that way they're able to have those social skills and working on that, I think it's just been very, been vital to the success, and, and you all have done a great, just a great job of, and I commend you for that.
Thanks, but yeah, we think that, you know, it's really important to see those families. Santana, like I said, we rearranged with the ele, with the elementary schedule, so she got taken away from some of her buddies, they're in eighth grade, and her schedule got changed, so what we're going to do tomorrow, talk to Mr. Owens and see if he can rearrange again, try to get her back in there with those buddies, so we try to, you know, just...
But that gives them some kind of abnormal thing.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's what she's saying. Because she's caught up, but she wants to go talk about, you know, girl stuff, and talk about whatever, they come in, they want to talk about hunting and, and trucks and all that stuff, so, yeah, I mean, if they want to come up there and they want to talk, because, I mean, like I said, I mean, that's part of school, right? We try to make it as normal as possible for them, and do the best we can. Mr. Hendrickson, I know I've said Mr. Hendrickson a couple of times, um, one day this week, he took, I guess he steps under baseball practice, basketball practice or something, went by and checked on a student, and took him and his girlfriend pizza and stuff, because that student hadn't done much work lately, so he just wanted to go check on him, try to get him in to, you know, encourage him to, to get finished. He's a senior, and he only likes a couple of classes finishing, so he thought, man, if I take him something to eat over there, that, you know, we went and visited him, they didn't have a whole lot, so, I mean, it's just, and that was, like I said, after three o'clock, that was five or six o'clock when there was baseball or basketball, or some kind of practice, I think basketball practice might be going on. So we just try to, you know, try to reach out to them as much as possible, you know, get them in. If you get them in, then you can talk to them. And if they come in once, then they might, they might come back again.
And I don't know how many home visits you've done this year, but I, I would venture to say it is a whole lot.
Say, I'm up today in twenty minutes, I'll be there in twenty minutes, so.
Yeah.
In Livingston.
I mean, so, our virtual students know, but again, it goes back, they know that somebody cares about them, and they know if I don't do what I'm supposed to be doing, somebody's going to come and check on me.
Yeah, like I said, they'll get tired of us calling, and get up and go to school, so we don't have that long call. Thank you all for what you're doing.
Very impressive, yeah, very impressive.
And thank you to your students.
Yeah, thank you for...
Very impressive, young ladies.
They tried to talk me out of coming, but glad they showed up.
They made you look a whole lot better, you realize that, right?
And if any of you all have never gotten an opportunity to go visit the Academy, I, I highly recommend you just take a few minutes and come, go, just walk through and let him show you around.
Any day, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday is the biggest number there of students at the Virtual Academy, but any day, but yeah, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, if you come by, guaranteed they're students going to help. We go middle school, get second chance breakfast for them, take that over there, they like to argue over the snacks and stuff, it's like normal.
I wanted to say, you know, I'm sorry to say I don't know her very well, but I have never heard anything but the utmost compliments and respect from Betty Holt. And you, I think she's a big game changer for kids. And, you know, please make sure that her and, and all of the staff know that, you know, they're, they're changing lives, they're impacting kids, and...
She was the one that the boy told, he had smart mouth today, or yesterday, told Betty that, I have a smart mouth. She said, well, that's okay, I do too. So they, they worked it out, she said, five minutes, come back in class, and it's all...
It's a good guy.
She, they, they, I mean, in the morning, every morning she comes in, this person takes, this parent takes, this parent takes, because they trust her, and they know that she's going to be there for them, and, and they, instead of just hiding and not answering the phone when the school calls, she, you know, she earns that trust with those parents, and they're willing to, you know, communicate with us.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I had slipped a message to Ms. Carrie, because I realized halfway through that, that we did not vote to adopt that agenda. I got so excited about hearing something good, Mr. McClure, that we did not do that. So with those changes that we discussed, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion approved.
We got a first and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay. The next thing on our agenda is our public comment. We have many parents that are here that would like to speak. We had talked about a three-minute time span, that way we can give fairness to everyone to express yourself. And before we do that, I wanted to share something with you. Over the last few weeks, we're getting ready to discuss something that the whole world is in turmoil about. You can argue both sides. And as a board, we have done that. We have talked both sides of this numerous, numerous times. And there's not really a good solution, I don't feel, period. But with that being said, I wanted to express this. Whether or not anyone in this room agree on something, we can disagree about a lot of things, okay? That's, that's life. That does not define who you are, but it's how you express yourself is what defines you. It reflects your character, it reflects your integrity, and it reflects the fact of whether or not you choose to be a leader for your family. I was going to read something tonight, and I, I forgot to pull it up. Have you all heard that little, I guess it's a poem, Everything You Need to Know You Learned in Kindergarten? That's the facts of life right there, okay? I bet you probably could quote it, can't you? But, you know, every day, whether you agree with the person sitting next to you or not, you should choose to be kind. You should be, you should choose to be kind. If you choose nothing else, do it for your child's sake, because they are watching everything you do. Every time you're talking down about your neighbor, every time that you are ridiculing one of us, they, they see that, they hear that, and that is how they will grow. And I'm saying that because we have definitely been ridiculed, okay? I mean, a lot lately. My shoulders have gotten a little broader, maybe, I don't know, but I want you all to know this. If, if we vote in a different manner than how you feel is appropriate, that's okay, because we vote our conscience. And when I make a decision up here, I do it because I love your kids, and in my heart, I feel like I've made a good decision, okay? It's not because I have no political motives in this fight, okay? I don't have no personal motives in this fight, but I do choose to try to be kind when I make my decisions. But I want to read this, Carrie found it and pulled it up, so I want to read this, okay? Everything you learn in kindergarten, okay? Number one, you share everything. Oh, wow. Number two, you play fair. Number three, don't hit nobody. Please don't hit none of us, okay? Number four, put things back where you found them. Number five, clean up your own mess. Number six, don't take things that aren't yours. Number seven, say you're sorry when you hurt somebody. Number eight, wash your hands before you eat. Number nine, flush. Number ten, warm cookies and cold milk are good for you.
Amen.
Number eleven, live a balanced life. Learn some and think some, and draw, and paint, and sing, and dance, and play, and work every day for something. Number twelve, take a nap every afternoon. Number thirteen, when you go into this world, watch out for traffic, hold hands, and stick together. Number fourteen, be aware of wonder. Remember the little seed in the styrofoam cup? The roots go down and the plant goes up, and nobody really knows how or why, but we are all alike that. And number fifteen, go fish and hamsters and white mice, and even the little seed in the styrofoam cup, they all die, and so do we. And number sixteen, and then remember the Dick and Jane books and the first word you learn, the biggest word of all is look. Okay? I thought that was kind of sweet, and it reminded me that we're here for those kindergartners. We're here for the preschoolers, we're here for the seniors, we're here for our virtual students, we're here for those that come from families who want to wear masks, and we are here for those students of families that don't want to wear masks. So please, by all means, choose kindness, so that our kids will see that we are going to grow, we want them to grow up to be better than what we are. I guess that's all I wanted to say, I'm sorry, I took, that might have been longer than my three minutes, okay? So I apologize, there you go, Ms. Carrie. But with that being said, I'm anxious and I'm excited that you all love your children and you want to be their voice. And we have, I believe, I think I counted seven, is that right? And some of you I know, and I'm sorry to say, some of you I don't know, but I'd like to get to know you. But we're going to start with Ms. Beth Brickley. Did I say that correct? Okay, if I didn't, I apologize.
So I, I like data. And so I'm going to give you the current data.
Oh, I'm sorry, if I didn't remind everyone, we're, we are doing a time, a three-minute timeframe for everyone, just, oh, okay, I didn't know if I'd say, okay.
Yeah, I heard you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
So I like data, like I said. I'm going to give you some data, the, the current data from, from the Kentucky website about school age population. And I'm also giving you, I was kind of trying to get ahead of, there's some information on, from CNN today about Connecticut, and New Jersey, and Delaware, and Oregon, that are talking about doing away with mask requirements, right? And so those are, are twenty points ahead of us as far as vaccination rates. And so I'm really concerned, really concerned. You know, you look at the, at the first, the five to eleven-year-olds, seven percent? We, we can't, we can't have kids being unmasked and only a seven percent vaccination rate. Now, it goes up a little bit, I did a little bit of math, so the eight to twenty-four-year-olds, I assume that they're spread across seven years, I did some math, and, you know, a hundred and, a hundred and thirty kids, I'm assuming that that's, for, for lack of a better word, that that's how that would lay out. And so even best-case scenario, the kids in our schools are only eighteen point seven percent vaccinated, and we just can't have that. It's not fair to grandparents, it's not fair to parents to have asymptomatic kids spreading the Omicron and coming home. And so I'm going to try and let Rochelle have the rest of my time, if you want to start over for her, because she's got four minutes long. So if, if you don't mind, I'm going to let her, and then Jeff's not here, so.
Okay.
If, if you don't mind, I'm going to try and give her that.
Ms. Rochelle. Before you start, Rochelle, are you a, a parent?
I am.
Okay, okay.
Caroline Brickley is my daughter.
Okay.
Sure.
I, I did not know, so thank you.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, Ms. Rochelle, you can go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I think she had, she had a...
So I just wanted to say, there's, there is no debate about masking, it works, that's why surgeons have worn them for a hundred and twenty-five years, and that's thanks to a German bacteriologist and hygienist, Karl Flugel. Masks inhibited the spread of disease-causing droplets and helped keep people from catching diseases such as COVID-19. It should be common sense. We also have a decrease in strep throat and flu while we consistently wore masks for COVID because masks work. Coronavirus is spread through respiratory droplets, it spreads more rapidly indoors and close proximity than when spending prolonged time around others. None of this has changed, so masking only while moving in our schools leaves our children unprotected while they're most vulnerable. The question to me isn't about masking, it's about whether or not Rockcastle Schools will be a safe place for everyone. Right now, with my son enrolled in the Academy, and by the way, he loves it, it's awesome, they've done a great job. The most at risk he is to exposure for COVID-19 is in school gyms where he plays basketball. This was not a concern when he practiced in Lexington where universal masking is enforced. I would much rather have my son in person for class, in a safe environment. I'm grateful for the online option, because I don't believe our school, because I don't believe our schools have been as safe as they could have been. It was a bad idea to remove universal masking in December, knowing Omicron was headed our way. When experts are ignored, people die. I personally do not think a public health matter of this magnitude should be a school board decision. I think that Kentucky Legislature failed us when it let these decisions to school boards with infection rates as high as they are. When health rules are different from district to district and can be changed with little to no input from healthcare professionals, you get ineffective policies like when you mask, you move. This makes things even more confusing for our children and our communities. All current guidelines concerning COVID-19 recommend layered preventative measures in schools, including masking, social distancing, and vaccination. None of this has, never has changed. Our kids wore masks in school for over a year, and they need to continue to do so until qualified scientists agree that it is no longer necessary. This is a lot of misinformation, there is a lot of misinformation being spread in our community. Politics has taken precedence over science. I've heard concerns about rights and freedom concerning mandates, or concerns about telling other parents what to do with their children. There are rules at school that are not rules in our homes. During the last meeting, Board Member Angie Parsons Woods had commented on school dress code in response to masking concerns. We are all expected to follow those rules on school grounds. People may smoke in their living room at home, but they know not to light up in a gym at a basketball game, and we're not going to take a vote on smoking because parents are upset. The true position concerning rights is the right of our children to be safe in our public schools, the right for our community to be safe at extracurricular activities, the decisions our school boards make, and the standards they set affect everyone in our community. We all also know that even with the best of intentions, parents are not always right, even concerning our own children. We have to look at the experts, not the parents, when making decisions about our schools. I wish we could stop discussing masks and just follow the guidelines we have from experts. We can't reach, research our way to expertise on COVID. Stop wasting valuable time going back and forth. I have a ballgame I'm late for because I won't quit fighting this fight. I think it's the right thing to do. I've been here every step, I'd much rather be sitting in a gym full of masked people cheering on our kids right now and watching this meeting later on. It's time we set standards in our schools that reflect that expert opinion and move on to other important issues. Kentucky's current COVID-19 infection rate is one in four. Now is not the time to end masking. It's past time we get this right.
Thank you, Rochelle. Thank you very much. I appreciate, one thing I can say to you, Rochelle, is that you have never strayed on your beliefs. Thank you for speaking up for your, your child.
No, I'm going to go.
Sure, go, take care of your kids.
Absolutely.
Ms. Sheree?
Good evening, and thank you all very much for having me here. And before I begin, I would like to give a brief history of my, of my personal history within the county. I've been a resident for thirty-two out of thirty-five years. My entire work history has been in Rockcastle, with the exception of my current position in Somerset. I represented the county as a track and field athlete for seven years, and when I became a mother, one of my first reasons for continuing to reside in Rockcastle was because I wanted my children to attend our school systems here. My oldest daughter also represents Rockcastle in various counties around the state as a track and field athlete. Currently, she is the number one ranked triple jump mark in the United States, so that's, she's really representing our state, our, our county well. The reason that I present this short history to you is to illustrate my devotion to our county and to our school system. I'm not here to argue with anybody about their opinion, or to pick apart anybody's opinion, I'm not here to cast a shadow over our faculty or our administration. In fact, I applaud all of you and the people sitting back here at these desks for making our school what it is. I presented that short history of my love and loyalty to our schools in hopes that you understand I'm for us, I'm not against us, I'm not against anybody here. I'm for uniting us, promoting us, and helping us to become the best of the best. I want us to continue to be leaders, not just academically, but I want us to be known But I want us to be known for the way we're helping our families grow and thrive, known for the morals and values we're instilling in the young minds of today that will ultimately shape and change our towns and cities in the future. I want Rock Castle County to be on the map as a place of inclusion and innovation. The topic that several of us are here this evening to discuss is not an I win, you lose situation. It's not about me being right and any of you being wrong. It's about a parent or guardian having a choice to, to either send their child to school with or without a mask. Regardless of my personal opinion of its ineffectiveness, as Misty Lakes has already brought to the attention of this board, there is nothing in the Constitution that gives anyone the right to force an individual to wear a mask. No matter the dynamics of a situation, whether you're casting a, a vote for a presidential election, you're deciding on what restaurant you're going to eat at, or even deciding to wear a mask. As an American citizen, we legally have the right to a free will choice. I'm not here to give any of you any new information or to reinvent the wheel when it comes to COVID, but I ask you, after seven hundred days in, at what point do we accept that like the flu, the coronavirus is probably among us to stay and that just maybe we should start returning to some normalcy? I'm in no way implying that a parent who wants to send their child to school in a mask shouldn't do so. And I'm not here to condemn anyone who feels impressed to wear it. I'm here to ask you that you level the playing field for all of us by making it optional. Because anything otherwise tips the scale in one direction or another. It makes you for one side and against the other side. Excuse me. The last thing that we should be doing is pitting ourselves against each other. The mask mandate is not comparable to things like dress code or a code of conduct. Those things make sense to me. If they don't make sense to you, I implore you to come up here and make a change. I'm sorry? Yes, it did. But while I don't have a problem with things like a government-enforced speed limit that tells me how fast I can drive my car, I would have a problem being told what kind of car to buy, what color it had to be, or what body style it had to have. I don't have a problem with the school expecting a certain standard of behavior from my children or, or their peers, but I have a huge problem with them being told they must wear a moral or morale-lowering, oxygen-restricting, acne, and headache-inducing facial covering, especially when there is zero proof that it even works to lower COVID rates in the first place. Members of the board, I'm certain that last night's survey was well-received and I hope that it was well-responded to, and maybe you have already made a decision. Either way, I'm urging you, please do not back parents into a corner. Please do not favor one side over another. I'm asking you as a parent who loves seeing our county succeed and our businesses flourish, our schools excel, and our students achieve their full potential. Bring things to ground zero. Put the decision of masking into its rightful place, the hands of parents and guardians. I am not for or against someone wearing a mask, I'm for each one of us having a choice.
Ms. Cherie, we appreciate your input, but we are not setting this timeframe because we're trying to cut anyone off from voicing their opinion.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that. I was not told that when I called to be put on the agenda.
Yes, we have to set certain guidelines, and by no means are we trying to be disrespectful to you. The only reason we let Ms. Riddle go over is because the other lady shared her time. And, and with that being said, um, you know, we're not here to put on a, a, and I hate to say it this way, this is not going to be a circus, we're not going to turn it into one tonight, okay? And I'm not saying what you gave us, but we are going to stick to our timeframe. And I, I appreciate if everyone else that has anything to say, that they will be respectful in doing so. Uh, thank you for voicing your opinion. The next person, Ms. Heather Hancock. Ms. Heather, do you have students, do you have, okay, okay, thank you.
Um, I'll first want to say thank you, um, for letting us have this opportunity to speak. Um, I'm a mother of three, two of those children are currently enrolled in the Rock Castle County School System. Unlike some parents who are pushing for this mask mandate to remain, those children have the opportunity to be rock online, and some are. Some are not even attending school in our district. And those people are not affected by the mask mandate, but I have, I have children who are. I could stand here tonight and give you statistic after statistic and study after study, fact after fact, but the truth is, it would be a waste of my time. This board has proven on more than one occasion that no matter what science might say or what the majority of citizens in this county might want, they listen to the vocal minority and they make decisions based on their personal opinions. At this last meeting on January the twenty-fourth, five out of the six board members passed the mask mandate without any input from the community. Why? I think you guys knew it was wrong and that it would never withstand the scrutiny of the majority of parents. You knew that no matter what studies might show, you have no right to re- personal responsibility from the hands of parents or guardians, but that's exactly what you did. You do not know better than the parents of these kids. You do not have the right to enforce a mask mandate on these kids that supersedes what CDC recommends or studies prove. It's unconstitutional and it's inadmissible. Forcing these masks on our children is nothing short of psychological child abuse. Teachers in our county are reporting struggles with students' morale and lack of work ethic. I spoke recently to a kindergarten teacher who was against the mask mandate, who was concerned about not being able to see social and emotional cues on her students' faces because of the mask. She pointed out that contradictory of what is often stressed on her, teachers are supposed to provide social, emotional help for children and adults, but that's merely impossible with a face covering. Look at these masks that were given to students at the beginning of the school year. The tag inside reads, "Warning: Not intended to prevent or eliminate exposure to any disease, infection, or communicable disease." These masks are pointless. However, I'm not going to go around telling people they can't mask their children if they want. Yet you're telling me I must mask mine. What if we all say no? I respect your right to wear a mask, but you should respect my child's right to not wear one. I'm urging and encouraging this board to remember, these are our children and this should be our choice. There are options available for those not acceptable dropping the mask mandate, whether it's vaccines, virtual online school, or wearing a mask daily. In conclusion, I would like to acknowledge the email that was sent out yesterday. It was a little late. I'm not convinced that this was the best way to reach the maximum amount of parents either. I hope that this survey was sent with good intentions and not because for the first, and not because for the first time all year long, you recognize parents were beginning to call and, and be ready to speak their opinion tonight. Do the right thing, drop the mask mandate. Make it parents' choice. If you don't, I'm afraid the fight here has just begun.
Ms. Bethany. Bethany, you have, just to let the board know, you, you have children. I don't know if you were going to express that in what you had, okay, yes, but you do have children in the district.
As a parent of three, two of which attend the school district, I'm standing here today to remind you that I'm the one that knows what is best for my children. I believe in freedom of choice. I'm not here how to tell any of you how to do your jobs, but when will you stop dictating parents' medical choices for their children when your job is to help educate them? My job, the job that God has called and blessed me for, is being their mother. These, my children are taught to be respectful, honest, caring, and brave. They obey their teachers. But it is also my job to be their voice, to be their backbone, to scream for their freedom, and to decide when enough is enough. My family, my children, we have followed the rules. We've sent them to school when the mandate was in effect, we've quarantined. We've spent hours sitting outside of libraries, fire departments, and fast-food restaurants because the area we live isn't accessible to Wi-Fi. I say that just to say that we have complied and followed all of the rules. We have done our part, but at what point is enough going to be enough? Over the course of the pandemic, we have turned kids' lives upside down at school for what is essentially a non-risk. Fewer kids have died with COVID than they have with cancer, heart disease, and suicide. Have the schools stopped serving french fries and hot dogs? Are we speaking, are we even speaking about the increased incidence of suicides? All we are doing are playing politics with our kids' faces by covering their noses and mouths, and this needs to stop. When does jumping through the hula hoops end? At what point do we as parents stand up and fight for our children? When do we say that enough is enough? At this point, it doesn't matter who is pro-mask, pro-vaccine, or who is against them. What matters is our freedom of choice has been taken away. You are dehumanizing our children and expecting us as parents to follow along. You are teaching my children to follow in line. You are teaching them that they must be group thinkers. You are teaching them to hide behind a piece of cloth that doesn't work. You are teaching them that once they become adults, they still will have no control over themselves or their own children that they're one day have. What you are doing to these children is unnecessary. The logic behind mandatory masking makes absolutely no sense and it needs to end. You are stripping our parental rights by thinking you know what's best for our kids. It is time for Rock Castle County to find the courage to stand, courage to lead, courage to follow in established law. Mask requirements are dropping everywhere, why must our children be last? We seem to stand firm on harassment, we make sure we teach our children not to bully, not to harass other kids. How is putting a mask on my child any different? How is it not considered harassment, bullying, or intimidation? I do not have a problem with anyone who chooses to wear a mask. That is your right and I support and I respect it. What I disagree with is you trying to control my children, and my daughters will no longer be made to comply. If the mask mandate stays in effect, the instant they are forced to put a mask on their face will be the instant we withdraw our children from Mount Vernon Elementary School and I turn in my letter of intent. When the day comes and we're reading about the COVID nineteen, nineteen pandemic in our his- history books, I strongly believe it will be vividly clear that we have betrayed our poor children, and for me, that sucks now.
Thank you, Ms. Bethany. Thank you, Bethany. Bethany, come on up.
What we've done to our children over the past two years is nothing short of criminal. We have completely upended their entire lives, destroyed their mental health, social lives, and their education. All for what? A virus that they have a ninety-nine point six percent survival rate against? Since we have been listening to these so-called experts, this is what we've been able to accomplish for our children. A fifty-one percent increase in attempted suicide among adolescents, more specifically with girls. A fifty percent increase in death, in depression and anxiety in our children. We have created more learning disabilities, speech impediments, and a mental health crisis like never before. So while you're trying to resolve an issue that has little to no threat to our children, we have instead created much, much larger problems. I know the leaders of this district have relied heavily on experts when making decisions for mandates such as mask-wearing. So my question is this, who are these so-called experts? Are these the same experts that say you need to wear a mask when entering a restaurant, but once you get to your table, you don't need it anymore? You know, much like our current mask mandate for our schools? I mean, how stupid is that? Or are we talking about the experts that told us we need to mask up and lock down for two weeks to flatten a curve? If so, here we are, three vaccines, three boosters, and two years later, and we're still talking about the same BS? Are we talking about the same experts that told us to get vaccinated so we couldn't contract or spread COVID? Because clearly those experts were wrong. Instead of admitting they were wrong, they think we're so stupid that they can just sew a fancy phrase out like breakthrough cases and will accept it as evolving science. We talking about the same experts that went on to tell us that if we, we can get a vaccine and still catch it and spread it, but you won't end up in the hospital? Well, those experts were wrong yet again. As the same experts that believe that early treatment, the only option is to send you home for fourteen days, ten days, five days? I mean, isolation periods changing faster than one variant to the next, and the time we need in between each booster shot. The only time the experts tell you to come back to see them is if you can't breathe. At this time is when you feel the best time to start a treatment plan that consists of a drug that once you receive two doses of, you only have a twenty-five percent chance of surviving. And that's twenty-five percent isn't because of COVID. They kept corporate America open to make millions of dollars while they shut their schools and churches down. Clearly following the recommendations has caused far more damage than it has good. So if you still believe that these same experts are worth listening to about mask-wearing and mask mandates and recommendations, then you might not be the best fit for making decisions for our children. After all, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. Until we get a backbone to say enough is enough, it's never going to end. I'll leave you with this quote right here from Thomas Jefferson. "If a law is unjust, a man is not only right to disobey it, he is obligated to do so."
Thank you, Ms. Cherie. Is tequila out?
I have to get my daughter from work, I expect even this late. So I'm gonna try to skip through here and not say the same thing all these people said that I agree with. I will say this, it's mind-boggling to me that America, I'm in here debating something like this over my child. And for those few people in here that do know my child, she has asthma and struggles to breathe and talks and can't understand what she's talking about with the mask on. It's been affecting her ability to the point that it's mal-messing with her emotional well-being. She's sitting over there. I'm not the only person that feels this way, obviously, so I'll skip through all this. I'm not saying I'm right or wrong with this issue. If people in the community want to wear masks, so be it. But we all should have the right and freedom of choice when it comes to raising our children. Starting tomorrow, my children have been told not to wear the mask. In a fair discipline for this, I will re-remove them from the district. And I am not forcing my will on my children, they don't want to do this. And as a mother, I told them to stand up for their rights and I'll stand tall behind them.
I appreciate all the parents that, uh, have voiced their opinions tonight. And, um, I know that some of you were here and hoped that maybe you could have said something, and, uh, you were not on the agenda. For that, I do apologize. Just let it be known, if you would like to say something in the future, you have to contact Central Office twenty-four hours in order to get put on the agenda. And, uh, we try to do that by, to keep things fair, okay? And, uh, once again, I also wanted to say, uh, we didn't put a timeframe on you because we didn't want to hear what you had to say. We put a timeframe on you because if we don't, and we have fifty people on our agenda, we're here for a long time, okay? So that's a reason. Uh, the next thing on our agenda is operations and actions. Uh, before we vote for this, uh, be reminded that five L was added, which is the facility assurances. Statement of assurances. Was there any questions?
I had a question, I know it kind of breaks the atmosphere of everybody.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, the, the Raptor Technologies and then the School Security Funds, like, I was just a little, what is that exactly?
Ms. Robert, can you share a little bit about Raptor?
I can, it's a visitor management system, and what it allows to do is, right now, IDs are required when anyone comes to our schools. And so right now, our secretaries take those IDs. What Raptor, that system, uh, it was in my report last month, I just briefly talked about it. But what that will allow us to do is, we take that ID, they can scan that, it searches sex offender registry, it searches other national registries so that we can, and, and it just helps us keep track of parents when they, uh, come in to check their students out. So that contract has to be approved before we move forward with that purchase.
Okay, I have a question. You said it, it, it does like a quick background check, is that?
Well, I wouldn't call it a background check, it, it doesn't do a background check, but it does check those registries. For, you know, if, if someone is on the sex offender registry, for example, they're not supposed to be within a thousand feet of school.
Okay, so it alerts the school?
It would alert the school that that person is on campus. It would alert our secretaries.
The Red Cross agreement, I assume that's pretty standard and we do that every year?
Um, we train, um, people to be certified in first aid, CPR, and if we do not have this contract with Red Cross, our trainer can continue to train, but we're not able to actually provide the certification to the people that she trains. So this is just a three-year renewal of allowing, um, our trainer to, to provide that in, in the district.
And Ms. Lakes, the School Security Fund request, that is related to funds that, and Ms. Jim, correct me if I misspeak here, but that's, we, there were so much, there were funds that were allocated to each district for school safety. And so that is, that you're approving us accessing those funds to use for things that we've done in relation to school security, including the Raptor system.
I just seen that on there and I realized they were connected.
Those are really two separate things?
Right.
Because there's, there's other funds, I don't know if you noticed the window coverings at the different schools?
I did. I first thought maybe that that was like security, like, um, for internet security. Then I'll send it on there and I was like, well, maybe it's security of the building, you know, so that's why I was wanting to be clear.
Physical, physical security measures for the.
I do have a question about that. Um, okay, if a parent, we'll use Mount Vernon Elementary because I'm more familiar with that school. So if a parent goes to Mount Vernon Elementary to check their child out, we show her ID, that ID is run through this program?
It will be, it's not now, right now, we just, we record that, we check, you know, and.
Is that going to ta, is, what's the timeframe? I'm getting a response back, and I guess I'm asking that because the other day, I mean, it was chaos. Toward the end of the day, you had twenty-five parents wanting to pick up their child at fifteen to three, and.
It's, it is instant, and it will, I mean, it, as soon as they scan it, if there is someone that's in that registry, it will alert that receptionist, that, that person is on that registry.
So there's a, there's a, here's this ID, picked up this kid, so there's a log, you know, so it's, we can go back in three days, and I just picked up this kid at this time and.
And part of the prop, right now, that parents have to sign out.
Sure.
And, and they have to check the sign-out list NIC to see if that is on the pickup list. You know, we have to go through, we have to take IDs for that sometimes, because if my mother comes to pick my child up, they may not know my mother. So we have to, have to verify their identification, and that's the law. I mean, that's, the one changed the law where, and Mr. Tom's been, of course, is here too, but that, that's part of the.
I went the other day and I got carded, you know, I won't say carded. Listen, and it tickled me today, and I know.
And then what they're supposed to do.
I see this lady all the time, and she and I are good friends, and she's like, I need to see your ID. And so I was like, okay, great.
Well, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
I've been in some high schools where they scan your ID, and it, it is very quick and easy and painless. Most of them print your name tag and it actually has your picture.
That's what this will do too.
A really horrible picture of your driver's license, of your horrible driver's license picture on your badge, but it's good for visitors, it really is.
Yeah, instead of having, you know, now we've got the visitor badges, that's generic, so, so that will also, if someone is coming into the building. So that will also, if someone is coming into the building, so if we have someone, a guest speaker coming in, then that will print their badge, it will have the picture on it, it will have their name, so folks will know right away that they are a visitor and be able to identify them.
And what was the cost of that again? The district's cost?
For the year, it's about thirteen thousand dollars, but that's including all the equipment. And then there's some yearly, I guess, costs associated with that. So some of that's one-time purchase of the equipment at seven locations, including the ATC and the academy. And then the, there's yearly costs that we will incur with that as well, to have the, basically, the techs, I'm saying that right around.
Is this something that is, is this something that is part of the Senate bill for the safety? I mean, this is not something that you have to have, it's just something that you're recommending?
It's something I'm recommending based on these funds that we have, and it will make, it will make our entry in visitor management system more, more efficient, I believe, and also more standard, so that at each school, they will all be doing the same thing. I'd say they're not right now, but this will, this will help to simplify that process.
The window coverings, are those like the, where you can't see from the outside in?
If you've noticed at the high school, the middle school, the academy, at Mount Vernon Elementary, we have covered all of those front entry doors. There, Mr. Stuart Adams, our school safety marshal, actually visited the high school today. And he was complimenting, you know, if there's a light gun situation, a classroom door window has to be covered, that's the law. So we use that to cover the gymnasium doors. I don't know if y'all noticed the coverings on that. That way, that P U teacher doesn't have to run over there and try to cover those windows. The library, if instructions going on in the area, those windows have to be covered. So it's, and it looks, it looks good.
So in the library at the high school, the big windows are completely covered?
Have you noticed?
I've not been there, no.
It looks really good. Yeah, they, we've already got that done, and this will help, this will, we'll use those funds for that.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions concerning operations and actions? If not, any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a first and second, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, we switched our G and A under item six, which is their discussion and action, and we did this so that parents don't have to wait all night long, because we might get started talking about money. And if we got a ton of it, we might just want to spend it, Jimmy, you think? Now, I'm joking, we don't ever have a ton, right? But six A now is review and approve the COVID-nineteen protocol. Ms. Carrie?
Okay, so I just want to take us back to our special call board meeting on January twenty-fourth. At that time, it was requested to have a special call board meeting because we were in a period of rapid rise in cases in Rockcastle County. So we were experiencing not only rapid cases and the rise in the county, but also within our school system with both staff and students at that time. So we were experiencing a shortage of bus drivers, food service employees, teachers, certified and classified staff, making it difficult for us to go to school and to have school. And I think no matter what side of this debate you're on, we all can agree that we want our students in school. You know, that's vital. We know that in order to fight the social and emotional issues that we're seeing in our students, we need them in school. So that was the background behind having that board meeting at that time. When we met on the twenty-fourth, it was determined that we would go for a ten-day period, and we would have a mask-to-move mandate for ten days and look at our numbers, watch our numbers in the county, watch our numbers in the school system, and then revisit that tonight at this meeting to see, you know, we did masks for ten days, what was the effect? What, you know, did we see an improvement? And so, I would like to report that, yes, we have seen an improvement during those ten days. According to the CDC, and anybody can go on that website and search specifically for Rockcastle County, we have experienced a four-point-seven-eight percent decrease in the positivity rate within the county over the last seven days. Additionally, both our student and our staff quarantine numbers have decreased across the district. And I want to give you those exact numbers. On the twenty-fourth, we had seventy-nine students that were positive in our school system and a hundred and thirty-eight students that were in quarantine. Over the last ten days, that's dropped dramatically. As of today, this afternoon, right before the meeting, we had thirty-three students that were positive and fifty-five students in quarantine. So you can see that over the last ten days, that has decreased significantly. So what this board set out to do at that last meeting was to put this in place temporarily. And I think that we repeated over and over that this was a short-term, short-term recommendation that we would revisit it after ten days. So after ten days, it is my recommendation that we remove the mask-to-move mandate and that we allow this to go back to being a choice, either for parents or staff, based on what this board set forward to do ten days ago, that to look at this at a temporary basis, to see if we saw improvement while our numbers were on the rise. We did see an improvement, so it's my recommendation that we go back to allowing this to be an option. But I would want to say this is a fluid situation. I think this board has shown that if our numbers rise and we feel like that we're not able to have school because we do not have the proper number of staff to safely have school, that this board's willing to re-implement that mask mandate. And we can continue to follow, you know, our data, continue to look at how many positives we have, how many students we have quarantined, both students and staff. But at this time, it's my recommendation that we go back to allowing this to be a parent's choice.
Ms. Carrie? Would you touch on, in case, I did not realize this until you had mentioned this to me before, going to NTI days, if our staff numbers get, that's not even an option now, correct? That's off the table?
The legislation, legislation does not allow for a district as a whole to move to completely virtual. We do have, each school has been legislated ten virtual or remote learning days. So if Mount Vernon Elementary experiences an increase or not able to have school due to a shortage of staff, then they could take off time and go to remote learning. But it has to be on a case-by-case, school-by-school basis. It cannot be for the entire district at one time.
So if, as an entire district, if our staff numbers were really high numbers, then we would just be, those days would be made up in the summer?
Yes, we would have to cancel school, and it would not be a virtual learning event. It would be, we are out of school, just very similar to a snow day. And then we would have to make those days up in June if that were to happen. So again, you know, it's important for us to monitor our staff, and we want to always ensure that we're able to have school safely. And that goes from picking up students on the school bus, to feeding them, to making certain that they have a teacher in front of them. So, you know, that's vital to us. We want to keep kids in school. We know what the, we know how vital that is to our students, to our families, to the emotional health of our students and our teachers. Our teachers want their kids there. So, but again, and I want to just briefly touch, because I know this is important, the staff survey, the staff and both parents and staff received a survey link. We had three-hundred-and-sixty-four staff members respond of that. Fifty-three point three percent do not or did not support a mask mandate, and forty-six point seven percent did support the mask mandate. So that is, you know, a very split decision among the staff members. Parent survey results, we had seven-hundred-and-ninety-two parents that took the survey. Sixty-six point two percent did not support a mask mandate, and thirty-three point eight percent did support a mask mandate. So it was quite a bit of difference there with the parents and the staff. But I appreciate everyone who did respond to that survey and appreciate everyone providing that information and...
And I just wanted, someone had said something about this earlier, and I just wanted to verify and speak up and say, this was decided yesterday afternoon to send out that survey just because, not, not so that we couldn't have a larger, you know, input from parents or staff. We wanted to hear what people wanted. We wanted to hear, we wanted to hear that voice. I mean, because you, a lot of you guys are here tonight, but there's more of you that's not here than is here, you know? And so, that's, it was sent out late, and I apologize. We might should have sent that out. I don't, who thought of that?
But I think to fail with my...
Okay, I mean, I'm glad she thought of it, because we were able to send that out to ask people. So I appreciate that. Thank you for referencing that.
Again, this situation is changing, and we all know that. And I think one of the parents alluded to the quarantining time. We went from ten day, fourteen days to ten days to five days. It does change, and it changes faster than a lot of us can keep up with. So again, I think it's just a fluid situation, and we, our goal is to always keep our kids in school. Like, what are we going to do to be able to achieve that?
So when those children are quarantined, they remote learn from home?
Yes.
So I think that there's some trouble with some kids not doing assignments from home?
And I do want to comment, I met this afternoon with the superintendent advisory committee. And for those of you don't know, there's one teacher on that committee, and I meet with one teacher per school. I meet with them every, the same day as our board meeting, and it's been a great resource and a great opportunity to learn. A comment was made to me by a teacher today that when a student is quarantined, yes, they are supposed to be doing their virtual learning, but that teacher may not always know, is that student experiencing symptoms? Does that student have a fever? Is that student in the bed, sick? Or is that student just quarantined because of an exposure and could be completing that work? So there's a lot of give and take and communication back and forth that is required of our teachers to find out, you know, are you okay to do this work now, or do you need those additional days to get that term in? And our teachers don't always know that. So if they reach out to a family, you know, families understand that our teachers don't have any way to know. So if they're reaching out to you and asking, it's not because your child is sick and they're trying to bother you. They don't really know if your child's sick or is your child been exposed. So they're just trying to stay in communication. But yes, there has been some issues with students completing work on quarantine, and if they are coded, as Mr. Ripert does, as quarantine, they're still required to complete score.
And that's an exemption code. They're not counted as, like an EHO, EEO.
But that is only given by Central Office, correct? I mean, if, so if my child, if I'm sick and I quarantine her?
Well, they don't have to call us, but if they call us, if they call the school, our attendance clerks know to code those students in that QRS, Quarantine Receiving Services, and that's a statewide code that's used everywhere. And as long as a student is symptomatic after exposure or after positive, then they are QRS.
So if a family has a student that is ill and experiencing symptoms, you know, I encourage you, call your school, let your child's teacher know, so we can properly code it in infinite campus, so it's not an unexcused absence.
And this is getting off the subject, I don't mean to, but Mr. Ripert and I had a discussion, had a parent contact me today that was very confused because their family physician had told them to quarantine this many days, and we have school staff that's saying, no, you can come back after this many days. That is just yet another bit of the confusion of the world. So the CDC says this, your family doctor says that, and we are saying something else. I don't know what the answer is.
Can I make just a little quick remark? And I talked to Mr. Ripert actually this week, because my kids were in quarantine, my daughter had COVID. And it wasn't that I was upset with necessarily the whole quarantine thing, but the middle school in Mount Vernon Elementary School gave me completely different rules, and I was very upset about it. To the extreme, the parent had to calm me down, and I called Mr. Ripert, and he made sure that I understood. And I think a lot of it is the staff isn't necessarily given. It's confusing for me, it's confusing for you, it's confusing for staff members, and I understand that. But I feel like every staff member should be given maybe a clarification on what's to be done. I'm very thankful for Mr. Ripert, I called, and he clarified it really quick. And I have told other parents that have had the issue just to call Central Office and ask him personally, because it's just the confusion that's aggravating, not knowing what to do.
I think that is the overall consensus of the world we're living in today. Ms. Carrie said this is something she has, I think she must be thinking along the lines of what you're saying. She's had the same thoughts, I guess.
So we have had posted for several weeks the COVID-nineteen in-school guidance, which outlines what you're supposed to do if you're exposed, what you're supposed to do if you're positive. It is confusing. And it's confusing, it's confusing for us, it's confusing for parents, it's confusing for staff members. So Ms. Jamie went back in today, and we've tried to reword some of this, to try to make it more clear. We bulleted it to try to, to help not only families, but staff members and all of us to better understand. So I have this ready for the board to look over tonight, and then we'll be posting this updated version on the website and on Facebook, just for people to take a look at. I know there's been some confusion about tests to stay. If the only clarifying factor in tests to stay is if you have a positive within your household, so if two siblings are in the household, one's positive, the other one cannot do test to stay. So that's just guidance that we have to follow in order to have that test-to-stay contract. So again, this will go back out tomorrow. It's really no different, we just tried to clarify it and make it a little more clear.
And they have those in the offices at the schools?
Yes, every school has.
Okay, I need to probably refer to that, I guess, when they're...
Yes, and I keep one by my desk. I mean, I, so when I get the phone call, I go back and say, okay, tell me your situation, let's walk through this. And I know Mr. Ripert does the same.
And, you know, each school has multiple people that could possibly answer the phone. You know, you've got, you've got the school nurse that sometimes gets in on those conversations. You've got a couple of receptionists. You've got the finance clerk, if everybody else is gone, that might answer that question.
But if it's on the paper...
And I know that it is, I know that it is a little bit...
Call us, call Central Office, call and ask to speak to me, call and ask to speak to Mr. Ripert, or walk anybody through this, any family. You know, we really do want to help and support and make sure that everybody's getting clear guidance.
Ms. Brown, this is not something we came up with. This is from...
No, no. This is guidance that we have compiled from the Kentucky Department of Education.
That we have to follow.
Theirs was, well, theirs was...
Theirs is probably totally different than anything.
Ours is quite simpler, is much simpler than what...
There's some things you can't take out there. I mean, you don't, because you're definitely, people are going to know.
I do think communication is important, so, yeah.
And we'll, we'll work to make certain, again, that all of our school office staff and everybody has this in prison.
And I think also, it'd be really good, I know, like, for my daughter, she's, her teacher has a thing where they communicate with every parent. Most of you, all your teachers probably send you direct texts, got teachers, it might be a good idea if we ask her teachers to send this to pay, or a basket. I mean, just, you know, to remind you, and listen, if you're anything like me and your life is crazy as mine is, I'll read this and I'll understand this, and then tomorrow, I'll be like, okay, wait a minute, did I? I mean, and that, that's just life. That's life, so. Well, we have heard, if anyone has any comments?
I do.
Oh, you do? Okay, Ms. Angie, go ahead.
Does anybody else want to go before me? Okay, so I'm going to sit here this evening as a board member, as a parent of two kids in our school system, and as a veteran medical provider on the front line of COVID for the last two years. I've practiced at our hospital as a PA for seventeen years and know firsthand how terrible COVID can be. I can sit here all night talking about studies, statistics, and accounts of how detrimental it can be, but there'll always be others contradicting my words. I can only speak from my own experiences and background to help make the best decision for our school district. As we are all well aware, our county's COVID positivity rate and mortality rate increased drastically a few weeks ago. The Omicron variant traveled rapidly through the communities within Rockcastle County. Most people affected had only cold, black symptoms, dealing with the stress of isolation and quarantine, as me myself had to deal with. Some have been sicker, scared they may worsen and need hospitalized. Then there are ones struck with the hardest, the symptoms coming fast and furious with rapid decline. These are the ones we see in our hospitals, struggling to breathe and needing supplemental oxygen. I'm sorry. This is passionate for me, you don't know. Sorry. Some don't live, but a lot haven't. When this happens, it's palpable, you can feel it. Locally, our county has not had little ones sick like this. And I hope you all know that, that's what I'm for. And I'm so sorry, makes me mad to be this way. Oh, my gosh, okay. But what if it was our kids? What if it was one kid? Was in that hospital on the vent? Would you all say, sure, let's go, I don't care, do what you have to do? That's where my decisions have come from. That's where my decisions have come from. I just want you to know that. I say all this to give insight in my process. I don't speak for the board. I speak for myself. I have not covered this lightly. I was a full proponent, I'm asking prior to the development of a COVID vaccine. Once the vaccination was available for the age of four and over, my opinion evolved into parent choice. I do understand the social emotional toll it's taken. I do understand the challenge of teaching without emotion being seen on the face of the teacher. I've struggled greatly to form a good decision. Two weeks ago, our county faced a rise of Omicron. And I've said before, we had multiple deaths of local residents that a lot of us knew. I watched it. Our hospitals, clinics, and quick care were overrun with patients needing treated. We, as a medical community, were scared and concerned. Our school district has also seen more and more COVID positive students, employees, or the need to quarantine. This posed issues with administration and us as a school board. After discussion, prayers, lots of prayers, and thoughtful concern, we decided to reinstate the mask mandate. It wasn't easy, and it was not just our opinion. We have all ki- have kids, most of us in the district, and all have the best interest of Rockcastle County at heart. The school board came together collectively and thoughtfully, and we considered the next step. It was handled respectfully amongst the five of us and our superintendent. We didn't all agree, but we respected each other and we made our decision. Was it was our decision two weeks ago foolproof? No. Does a mask offer a hundred percent protection? No. Was masks removing the best approach? It wasn't. Is negative and hurtful comments on social media from both sides of this argument helpful? I'm sorry. We now come back together for another decision. Fortunately appears that our COVID numbers are declining yet. And the majority of those affected have mild to moderate symptoms. This can be treated at home, and I promise this will help inform our decision. Please know that we take into account and respect all opinions, and it's brave for people to be here. It's hard to talk in public. Remember that not everyone shares your perspective or views. We all have our reasons and experiences that shape our beliefs.
Uh, Ms. Angie, I just, I wanted to say, um, you know, uh, um, my mom always said out of sight, out of mind. If you're not around someone that's been sick from it, it's hard to imagine how how it is. And I apologize that, um, you know, it's affected you a lot more than it's affected me because you've been around that. And um, I I will say this, I got a message today. I have a six-year-old cousin who they admitted at Rockcastle Hospital on oxygen right now from pneumonia. She's six years old. So if we think, and she's perfectly healthy. That's the thing about it, that you know, so.
We can turn on a dime.
Yeah, so um, it stuff like that breaks her heart. And but but Ms. Angie saying that we have all, this is something that we have not made the decision very lightly. Of all my years of serving on this board, this has been the most difficult thing. By no means have I ever wanted to make any parent feel like we're trying to take anything away from you. That's not what our plans have been at all. What we have tried to do as a board, I think I can speak freely when I say this, what we've tried to do is just to to hang on to any hopes that we have of keeping our kids safe and healthy in a school building. It's obvious by the parents that are represent and grandparents that are represented here tonight that you have a passion to love your children and to take care of them and to nurture them and to provide them with everything that is necessary for them to be successful in life. But unfortunately, not all children in Rockcastle County have that privilege. Our our poverty, and I hate to base things on on financial status, but statistics show financially, our poverty numbers are high. And children that are poverty streaking do not have opportunities. A lot of them don't have, a lot of them don't have a meal. You know, so with that, know that we do not make these decisions lightly. But it, I'm sorry.
But we start every meeting with a prayer. Last week, we all ended that meeting together in prayer for our kids, their families, our entire county. So no decision that we make comes easy. We come together for what we think is best at that time.
Uh, with that being said, I see your little note here. Ms. Carrie has made the recommendation because of our numbers have dropped that we go back to a mask option for parents. And um,
And staff.
And staff, yes, and staff. This is something that uh we talked about ten ten days ago that we were going to discuss because we wanted to look at the numbers again. I wish our numbers would have been more effective in in showing the research that we wanted to do. But with that being said, Ms. Carrie's recommendation is as that. I need a motion to approve.
I'd like a motion to approve.
Second.
We got a second. I'm in favor. I'm not sure if everyone's in favor. All members are in favor, we will go to a mask option for our students of Rockcastle County at this time.
We've noticed that if numbers rise again, unfortunately.
It is something we.
If we did have to look at it.
Let's pray.
We hope we don't. We hope this.
I hope this is over.
Hope we're on a downhill slide.
I know my kids need one, I'll tell you.
We've been hoping for a downhill slide for two years, haven't we?
Cam, what does this mean for your bus drivers? Is there still a mandate on bus drivers?
Same for bus drivers, isn't it?
Will not change, none of the bus drivers.
That mandate's in place until March the eighteenth.
Since when?
Until March the eighteenth.
And that will be revisited by the federal, that's a federal guideline, correct? Not a state guideline?
I've seen any recent extensions of that, so.
Okay. Do, um, well, never mind. I'll ask it at another time. I'll ask it when we. All right, the next thing that we will go to is, um, I said we would switch G and A. So I guess we're gonna have to review and approve the RUS grant contract agreement. Ms. Jenny, this is all you.
Okay, um, as you may recall, Ms. Ballinger and the district leadership team collaborated to apply for funding in the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Utility Services. Their proposal was presented to the board for approval in May twenty twenty-one. We are excited to share that Rockcastle County School District has been awarded the federal grant in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Well, we got some good news tonight. Yay!
We, along with our partners at Rockcastle Regional Hospital and Respiratory Care Center, Rock Pediatrics, and Somerset Mental Health, will utilize the equipment to provide synchronous telebehavior mental health services, including counseling, therapy, and case management. The predominant use of the system is for the delivery of mental health services and the secondary use of technology for in-person and remote instruction. Each of our schools will receive a seventy-five-inch ViewSonic interactive flat panel with a content-sharing PC on a mobile cart. Our partners will also receive this system. Each school will receive a cart and system for telehealth and telecounseling. Over eighty systems will be installed in classrooms at Rockcastle County High School and Rockcastle County Middle School.
Wow, that is awesome. That's that's great.
This is one of the many examples of the innovative and strategic efforts of our school district to maximize both local, state, and federal resources for an excellent return on investment.
Wonderful.
Move to approve.
Yeah, I'm gonna second that one, okay? That is wonderful.
We're already doing this, right? Are we? We're already doing this. It's just enhancement.
This this will enhance everything and uh more kids.
And more schools.
Seventy-five-inch panels, um, Brandon's excited. Teachers will be excited.
It's like Christmas, right?
It will, um, much more improved and and we'll be able to give you some demonstrations of those as we move along. New equipment, um, for um our nurses in our um in each of our schools. The enhancement of case management and communication with mental health, professionals at the school and connecting with our partners, um, is is certainly a um a positive for for everyone.
Now, is this a grant that was given to many, many districts or is very, very, very?
Very, very competitive.
Well, whoever applied for it, you know.
Good job. Jenny swings all accolades here. She's worked extremely hard. Jenny and Brandon have worked very hard on this.
It was a team effort. So we are excited. We were excited to get the news on a on a Sunday night. I opened my email. I had to share the news with some folks. Um, we were very, this this news, there was one round that um that we were not selected. And um, so we were a little disappointed. I was very disappointed. And um, our partners that we worked with, um, knew that we had scored really, really high. And um, they were they were kind of with us that, um, you know, that we had not received that news that we had hoped. Um, so we were really excited that, um, we heard that they were going back and revisiting their scoring and you know, the overall review of the grant, and we were in the next round. So.
Now, is this the months ago, maybe longer than, is this with the ones that you had come to us and asked it for a contract with somebody? Okay, wonderful. Well, that has definitely made it worth it, hasn't it? Wonderful.
So this is something that the district could consider, um, moving forward to apply for additional funds. Again, that might include, um, potentially a grant rider and matching funds. So at some point, you know, as the Ms. Ballinger and the district leadership team, you know, have conversations and look at, you know, at the possibilities, um, you know, this might be something we want to consider again for the future. We have three years to spend the funds. Um, so.
Brandon's smiling. I don't I don't think that.
Brandon's got a span.
He's got it, yeah.
Is this limited to staff or it can be employees?
It's the it's the.
It's the.
Equipment, okay.
And um, the installation and professional development.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Um, we hope to begin, um, that process in in of installation this summer at the high school. And then we'll look at at the middle school next. And hope that supply chain issues, you know, do not impact the project. But but we're with the approval of the agreement, we can begin that work.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for taking that initiative to do that work. And now our kids are gonna benefit for that, for sure.
Move to approve.
You put, I mean, I think we're all gonna vote for that one, aren't we? That's what we're all in agreement for. Okay, six C, review and approve the student accident insurance. Ms. Jenny?
You have, um, from Roberts Insurance, um, they have provided free renewal options for the district. And you can see those on the second page there. We are recommending the renewal at the same rate as the prior year um with the same company at the same coverage. And um, we're bringing this to you a little bit earlier, um, this year in hopes to save about four percent um on the anticipated increases in the cost. So we we would renew at the same rate.
Which one of those three options, Ms. Jenny?
Um, it's the first with Hartford at seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents.
How often is, uh, do our students use this? Is it pretty often?
Pardon?
How often is this used?
Um, it is, it it does provide insurance for every student in our school district. And um, everything from, um, you know, if on, um, break an arm, um, an athlete is hurt while in sports or, you know, a very minor, um, you know, scrape that needs some medical attention.
But this is a secondary.
It is a secondary, um, it is secondary to the primary insurance. Most often where we see that it is very, very beneficial is when there's an injury, uh, students need physical therapy or there is copays for imaging. Um, we all know that that can be really expensive. Um, so this steps in and helps, um, families, you know, to pay those, um, copays and and balances. It it does not always cover everything. There are limits. And um, the limits are the same as they were last year. Thank you.
Do you want to have any other questions? Need a motion to approve the student accident insurance?
Motion.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, review and approve the second reading. No, never mind, back up. Review and approve the amendment to the twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar.
Okay, so we uh, we got a lot of calendars to look at tonight. So the and and this proposal is an amendment to this year's school calendar. So I want y'all to understand, we're gonna get to the next year's calendar in just a minute. But the this is an amendment to this year's calendar. Of course, every year we have to amend the calendar. There's changes every year that happen. Um, and so we have to, we have to change it. I'm coming to you a little bit earlier this year to ask for a calendar amendment. And I've already reflected some of the changes on here. So just to update everybody where we're at. So right now, we have, we have, we have had seven NTI days. Those were all in January, January sixth, the seventh, the eighteenth, the nineteenth, the twentieth, twenty-first, and the twenty-eighth. Uh, those were all because of uh safety reasons, because the the roads were were slick and we couldn't have in-person instruction, so we had NTI. We have actually canceled school, though, this year three days, uh, for various reasons. We had a snow day last Friday. If you remember, back in September, the second and third, we also canceled school two days because of COVID. We did not have that NTI days, those two days. So those were also two days that we canceled. So big picture, we have missed ten in-person days this year. So as the calendar stands right now, the last day of in-person instruction, and this is on your on your Google Drive, if you want, if you want to look there, the last day of in-person instruction, as it stands right now, would be May twenty-seventh. Memorial Day is May the thirtieth. We have to have closing day after, and that's a, that's essentially professional development day. But we have to have closing day after the last day for students. So at this point, closing day would be May thirty-first. In my recommendation, I don't think we need to do that on Memorial Day. I think we need to do that on on May thirty-first. If we missed any more days, now again, we've got three more NTI days left. But if we had to cancel school, not have school at all, that decision had to be made. And that could be made for a variety of reasons. You know, we thought more folks would be without electricity Friday. We were concerned about that. Of course, last year, you all know the situation we had, February fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth. We had a, we had a bad a bad time there. So, um, if we had to cancel school again and not have NTI, that would put us into either a couple of things, having to go Memorial Day or going June into June. So, uh, to avoid that and to give us some flexibility, I'm not saying we're gonna avoid that because who knows what's gonna happen. We've still got, um, seventy-two days, I think, of school left. We've still got two weeks of February. We've still got March. So I'm asking the board for us to change Presidents' Day into an instruction day. So as it stands right now, that day would be a a day off of school. We would not, we'd not be in school. That would be a break day. But I'm asking the board to amend the calendar to make that a regular instruction day. It's a week and a half. It's a week from from Monday, a little more than a week and a half from today. And that would provide us a little more flexibility. That would give us an additional day to close. So that would give us at least four, and if you look at Memorial Day, possibly five, before we would get into June. And essentially, that would make up for last Friday when we closed school. So, um, I think at this point, uh, given the the fact that we've got several, uh, more weeks of winter, despite whatever the grandhogs said, I think we it would be wise for us to go ahead and have school on that day and give us a little bit more flexibility. I'm gonna make a pre that.
I'm fine with that.
I'm good too, yes.
Yeah, I've it 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 I cringe thinking of school in June.
Yes.
I do. I mean, I I'll be the first to say. I'm sure these teachers cringe. I'm sure you cringe thinking of school in June, too, don't you?
What I was gonna say this weekend, aren't we supposed to get another fright? I may need to be relentless.
The week looks good. I can depresspeak more of this than me, but, uh, of course, you know, who knows? But, uh, we'll have, what, two weeks left after this week, so. So that will give us at least four days, you know, that we could.
Yeah, Ken, Ken's face is red. Sorry, Ken.
He's going to do what he's going to do.
All right, so I need a motion to approve this amendment to, we got it first, second, all in favor? Okay, now review and approve the second reading of the twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar. We looked at this for the first time last month.
The, I think, just as just for review, Calendar Committee met late December. We also met there the first week of January. We had a couple of options, but I told the committee, these were options that that could change if we want to do a combination of those. And they did, and they wanted to go with this first option. And so you all approved that calendar reading at our January eleventh board meeting. It does take two readings for a calendar to be approved. So tonight, I'm asking you to approve the same calendar. Obviously, there have not been any changes. It's just like we looked at last last month. It's option one. Hundred and seventy instruction days, four holidays, two embedded PD days, seven PD days, and opening and closing day for a hundred and eighty-five total school days for for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We also added in makeup days. The last day on this calendar is May twenty-fourth, with a closing day on May twenty-fifth. It does provide a little more flexibility this year, not a lot, but a little more for the end of end of the school.
Anyone have any questions?
No.
Okay, this is going to be the final, the final vote for this school calendar?
I'm making my motion to approve for a second.
All in favor? Review and approve the special education teacher position for Broadhead Elementary. Ms. Hubbard?
And yes, I'd like to ask for another position for a special education teacher there at Broadhead. And they currently have four special education teachers there. We have right now sixty students with IAPs that's receiving services. And they have several more referrals and things that's coming along. So everyone's kind of max capacity right now. And and just knowing that we have some other students that's going to place, that's going to put them over, just in order to stay in compliance, we'd like to ask for another position.
That will be an all-day, full-time position.
This is very similar to what we just had to do at Roundstone. Okay, if you'll, if you'll recall during the COVID period, we we really weren't in school to make those special education referrals. So now that we are back in school in person, those are happening. Our teachers are at maximum capacity. Of course, each one of those teachers can have fifteen students on their caseload. They currently already have fifteen. And we know within the next several weeks that that students are going to place. And again, that special education law is federal law, those numbers that we have to be in compliance with.
I I guess I have a question. I know a few, maybe it was even last month, we had many, many special ed positions that was open in the county. Have those been filled? They have been filled. Okay.
We have.
There is still one that that in the state position. We've not had any certified applicants all school year for that position.
That requires a special certification different than this would be an LBD certification. So that requires a special certification, and we've not had any applicants. So we have been, we've had a substitute teacher in there for the entire school year.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, I need to, I feel like we need to, well, we have to do whatever to keep us in compliance. But I think more than just being in compliance, I think we need that support at Broadhead Elementary to help our staff and help the children, I think, yes.
So much going on now contributes to that number rising. So you just kind of have to roll with with that growth going on.
And it's not always pertinent to just look at caseload numbers. It's also, you know, we have to also take into consideration needs of students. And, you know, some special education students require more assistance, require more time versus another student that might qualify for limited services. I think not just looking only at those numbers, but also at need and and there is a need currently.
I'm making my motion to approve.
I've got a first, I've got a second. All in favor? Hope it's helpful. Hope it takes a little bit off you ladies. You all ready to go now, right? Thank you all. I appreciate you very much. Uh, the next thing is, which was normally first, Jenny, but we're putting you back in the hot seat. Uh, review and approve the monthly financial reports.
So you have your financial reports for the month ending of January. If there are any questions or areas that you would like to discuss?
That number looks a little better, doesn't it, Jenny?
It does.
You know, I didn't ask this earlier, but when will you receive the funds for that grant?
The funds are on a reimbursement basis. So as we expend funds, we will request, you know, so there there will be, we'll be processing that through the federal level. You know, so it it may take, I think, I think that took us four to six weeks on reimbursement.
We're hoping to install some stuff in July.
Is that something, I know you you've presented a budget to us. Uh, that's something that you have to put into that budget now, correct?
Yes.
Or, I mean, and the reason I ask that, will tho- will those funds become available for this next school year?
They will be available once the contract's executed, you know, and we submit that along with some additional documentation to the federal level. It will go through an approval process to make sure we have everything taken care of. And then we can begin to order our equipment. And yes, that will be added to the budget in fund two.
Thank you, Ms. Jenny. Anyone have any other questions for Ms. Jenny? Need a motion to approve our monthly financial reports? Motion?
Second.
All in favor? Item seven A, review our superintendent's personnel action report.
And you have that in your Google Drive if anyone has any questions?
I didn't really have any questions concerning that, except for do what open position, what do you have listed right now? I'm just curious.
We have the middle school job at for the FND classroom. It's been posted all school year. We have a special education job at Mount Vernon Elementary that was just posted yesterday. And that that's all the certified positions. And then we have, of course, several classrooms.
I was just curious.
When will we start getting retirements? Is that, I mean, I say we start hearing about those this month or next month?
We've already sent out letter of entreats to all staff members, so they're in the process of returning those now, letting us know if they plan to return or if they're, they will be.
Do you know how many you anticipate?
We haven't received everything back yet, so it, we can report back to you next month and let you know.
Thank you, Ms. Carrie. Uh, department reports. I'm not sure if anyone wanted to say anything.
I'd like to make mention, you all did ask about a vaccine booster clinic at Dr. Rockfeeds. Because of the staff staffing situation at Dr. Rock, that's regional too, they want to do that at their clinic. It's going to be February eighteenth, three thirty to five thirty, so we'll, we'll promote that.
Can they get boosters there too?
Yes, it is. It's the booster. It's for, I should have said that. It's for the booster. Yes, it's the booster clinic.
And you said February eighteenth?
February eighteenth, three thirty to five thirty. It's at Rockfeeds Clinic. Don't leave an appointment. And we'll be putting that out there on the district website. And Ms. Jessica Donnell settled communication with her receptionist about getting that out to her school staff.
I'm going to press up on department reports for a quick.
Are you going to the department members? No, I'm joking.
Is it time for that? I need to affirm the people. Um, preschool, was those like new tables that you guys got?
They were, yeah. And some of the items in the pictures were some new items that we purchased this year. And they had sent pictures just to their students, you know, taking advantage of those activity tables and different activities that we're participating in.
That was awesome, I thought. And then App Harvest is coming soon.
Coming soon.
I request that we get to go see that at some point.
Yes, absolutely. And there will be a, once the, it is installed and the students have had an opportunity to go through a growth cycle, a growing cycle, then there will be, App Harvest always has like a PR time. So we'll make certain that you all are invited and and we'll kind of introduce that to the community. And you'll get to tour.
I saw other schools that'll be here in somewhere between six weeks and six months or twelve months or fifteen months.
Well, we've, we've got our commit, I mean, we've gotten our, we've been waiting.
Yeah, I know, I know.
End of the month, but it has moved a couple of times.
Well, they're all, all those ones across the state are moving backward.
Yeah.
Kudos to you all for having it ready to plug in. Some, I know one school has their sitting there and they can't get it hooked up. So good news is we're ready to go with it.
Yeah, we're, Trent's, Trent's ready.
Trent, I guess, since we're doing asking questions, how's everything in the maintenance? I mean.
Going pretty well, I would think. Really, the the project at Mount Vernon is really getting ready to ramp up. Uh, the nighttime work's going to start. We've got kind of a phased plan. We've worked with Mr. Thomas on doing that. The contractor says that they can do it twice as fast as what we want them to do, so that's great. They're, they're really, really confident. They can finish the project by the end of summer. Hopefully be done by end of July. That way, teachers can move back in and we can, we can do some work on the floors. Then we'll have to come back in. We we need to paint.
Is that what all the trailers are there for right now? I thought it was.
They've got material in it. They delivered material today for ductwork. That'll be the first phase. Right now, the return, like your filter and your return are out in the hallway. Uh, that's ideally in the space that's being conditioned. So that's going to be ducted over into the rooms. The return hour go back out that way, back to the unit in the hallway. So it's kind of, it's going to be a big upgrade for Mount Vernon. I mean, they're, they're going to really notice it.
You know, I have another question. We haven't discussed this for a while. Any news about our legislation helping us get money for middle school? Have you heard anything else? I mean, has there been any more?
Mr. Robert and I have been to Frankfurt several times over the last couple of weeks. Um, we've met with Josh Bray, we met with Jared Carpenter, and we now have a new State Senator Brandon Storm. So we've met with them multiple times. They're fully aware that what we need to do to equalize that nickel. They are also pushing for us to have a five million dollar line item in the Senate budget. Um, so we're working it. We're, we're talking with them multiple times a week. Still a little bit early in the session. Of course, this session lasts till April, so that budget session will not, probably won't wrap up from what we've told until April. So we're just continuing to push and continuing to to ask, and we'll probably go back next week and.
We did the squeaky wheel.
Yeah.
Do we need to go?
I squeaked some today.
Matt was going today, so, yes, all of us can squeak and we can, I can, I can communicate with you all the messaging that we've been sharing. And what we need.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That's wonderful.
And you said, that's about maintenance. This is an interesting fact. We replaced a fifty-year-old water heater at the middle school today.
Fifty?
Fifty.
I wish I had that one. I just took two in the fall.
That's great.
Wow. How big, how many gallons?
It was a forty-seven gallon. It was a small one. It was up in the ceiling in the art room, art room ceiling.
Fifty euros.
Fifty euros.
They just don't make them like that anymore. That's going to save, what, fifteen thousand a year in the utility bill right there, probably?
Probably go up.
Yeah, yeah, probably, yes. Wow, that's amazing.
Ms. Angie, can I say one more thing?
Please.
I know you all talked about, and I don't want to spend my time on this, but NTI participation rates. So all of our teachers have to report student participation rate for each NTI day, and then I have to report that to the state. So just so you know, over those seven NTI days, our student participation rate is about eighty percent. So I I think that's pretty good. And and that is students completing work, turning in work, doing what the teacher has them to do. You know, I don't know what that'd be in a normal day. You know, I, if we ask teachers, how many of your students did the work today? You know, what's that going to be? So I'm, I, I was encouraged by that number. I think that's, and it was a little bit different at schools, but but generally speaking, I was encouraged by that, so.
And is that just school day, like eight to three, or is that twenty-four hour?
Well, they could, they've got seven days to complete that NTI.
Okay, no, I was curious because, you know, mine would probably be like at five o'clock at night.
I sent that Google form out. They've got seven days to complete it. Of course, if some of them completed, they they go ahead and log that information, but but they do have seven days to do that work.
I want to say to you all, to our teachers, I appreciate them so much. Teaching on one platform, I imagine, would be so hard, but they teach on so many platforms. Um, I'm thankful for our teachers. I know I have one child that, when it comes to NTI, man, it is uphill battle. And their teachers reach out. If they can't get them to finally do it, they reach out to me. And then, of course, comes mom a lot. But they are just nonstop. I mean, we are so blessed. We're so blessed, and I just, I thank you all. I thank, I thank you all so much for all you do, all the effort you put in.
Ms. Carrie?
I just want to take just a moment to thank you all. I know the last several weeks have been very difficult. But I appreciate each of you. I appreciate your caring, your compassion, your integrity. And I hope that everyone can see how your, your heart for children and families and students of Rockcastle County schools. And I know that the decisions that you've been, that you had to make have not been easy. I know that you've lost sleep over it. You've shed tears over it. And I just wanted to say thank you. Uh, you, you often have a thankless job, but but I know that you're here to serve kids. And I, I think I said to, to one of you today, I know without a shadow of a doubt, if we had a family in need, that I could pick up a phone, the phone right now and call any of you and say, we have a staff member in need, we have a family in need. And you would give anybody the shirt off your back. And I think that we're very blessed to say that about our board. And I appreciate each of you, so I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you.
Any, any other comments, Matt?
I just want to say publicly for the record how much I appreciate our, our administrators, starting at the school level. I I don't know if any of them are watching or not, so I won't stare at the camera. But I just can't imagine what it's been like to be a principal or an assistant principal the last two years. And they've done great work. I know often they've had a coworker out or covering classes and all that. And I I just want to say that publicly for the record. And then also, all of you all, department heads and Ms. Ballinger, I know you all have pivoted till you're dizzy. Uh, and we appreciate that a bunch, the work you all have done. Uh, it's, it's just amazing, the stuff you all have done. I know two weeks ago, when we had the special call meeting, we all got in our cars and went home. And you all shuffled back across the street to make it all happen. And that was, uh, that reminded me, and it was a good reminder, that whatever we do, you all have to make it work and put it in place. And so we, I appreciate that, and I hope, if our principals are watching, I hope you all realize how much we appreciate you. And if we can do anything to support you all, we want to do that. My goal was always to make y'all's job as easy as we can make it while we get the job done, so.
Kudos. I'm good.
Well, you know.
Get your notebook out.
Um, I just want to brag on the school district as well and how, I'm always amazed at how like individual needs are met, even like at the academy. I didn't say anything then, but like, I remember that's the first time that, one of the, the first time as a school board member, when I was taken around to the schools. And, um, just the stories of some of the kids, and, I mean, everybody cares about them. They really want them to succeed. And when I visited Broadhead, one of the conversations I had with the principal there was, I'm all about self-confidence in kids. That's my passion. And they talked about the mental health support that they have there now and how they will pull kids out, and they work on that. And so it, just altogether, it's like, it's a huge team effort that everybody pulls for the individual child, whatever their needs is. So, um, I like to thank Ms. Ballinger that since, you know, I was, I've been a board member a skinny minute. Uh, but since she's been on, one of the requests as a, as a board at that time, when she was hired, was just to be able to hear more from the community and hear from schools and principals. And in every meeting, you know, we have had a representative of the school and and talk about that. So I really think that, um, as, as, as painful as this process has been over the last little bit, I I just feel like as a, a board and as the whole school district and community, that we're in the right direction because we're communicating. And she's allowed that, you know, to happen and and we. And she's allowed that, you know, to happen, and, and we do care what, uh, parents, you know, what they think. We care what, what staff thinks, and this isn't just about us. It's, it's a team effort, so. Just, uh, and I respect my board members very much.
I felt a bit tired. I went, oh.
Ms. Angie, I could, I know, also, it's still Counselors Week, so.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
We'll all give, um, all of our school council.
And Ms. Jamie's gonna do some recognition of them this, this week as well, so. Yes, they are, they are invaluable service to our, to our schools.
Uh, before we leave, I just wanted to say I appreciate all of you. I think you all know that we do. Uh, I know that you put countless hours in after you leave this place every day. And, um, I appreciate our parents in this district. I appreciate our grandparents. Um, you know, it takes a village. I've heard that my whole life. And if you're, when you're raising a child, you realize that more and more. And, um, you know, I said this earlier tonight, and I, I will choose to say it again. Um, I just think we need to choose to be kind. Choose to be kind to others. Uh, we can agree to disagree. But at the end of it, if you choose kindness, I think we'll always win, you know? And, uh, no matter what decision, you know, when you get to this point, you know, we were raised, when we're, when we're younger, we're raised, if you were ever an athlete, you're competitive, and you want to win, 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 win. And that's driven into us from, as a small child, you know, you always want to win your side, your argument. And, uh, it's not about winning. Not in the fight that we are in today. It's nothing about winning. It's about choosing to be kind. And, um, I appreciate you all. Appreciate your hard work. And our children are gonna be better than we are. They are gonna grow up. They're gonna be more intelligent. They're gonna, they're gonna be compassionate. They're going to show the world that, uh, they are better than us, and I believe that firmly. With that being said, uh, I know we have a school board meeting in Louisville. I think there's, Matt, are you gonna be there? Okay, uh, Misty, I don't think, and you all have to, Ms. Carrie, will you be there?
Yes, and you all have, should have your confirmations in your school email, and if you need help with any of that, let me know.
Have we got our own confirmation?
Yes, you should, and if you've not received that, I'll make certain that we board that again too.
You may need to, because I've lost everything, where I had to switch funds, so.
We'll just do that tomorrow.
Please. And, uh, thank you all again. I need a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second. Thank you so much.